Time to be respectful of everybody's time. We have a full council here tonight. Councilman Hicks, would you please lead us in the invocation?
Dear good Father, thank you for tonight. Thank you for bringing us together. Just let us convene in a good manner that we are able to do business for the city of Sibolo. Thank those citizens that are here tonight to speak up and let us know their concerns and talk to us. Just watch after our first responders and our military personnel in these things we pray. Amen.
Ladies and to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next up is citizens to be heard. This is the only time during the council meeting that a citizen can address the city council. It is an opportunity for visitors and guests to address the city council on any issue, to include agenda items. All visitors wishing to speak must fill out the sign-in roster prior to the start of the meeting. The city council may not deliberate any non-agenda issue, nor may any action be taken on any non-agenda issue at this time. However, the city council may present any factual response to items brought up by citizens. Attorney General opinion JCO 169, limit of three minutes each. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body. Remarks may also be addressed to any individual member of the council so long as the remarks are about matters of local public concern and not disruptive to the meeting or threatening to the member or any attendee, including city staff. Any person violating this policy may be requested to leave the meeting, but no person may be requested to leave or forced to leave the meeting because of the viewpoint expressed. This meeting is live streamed. If anyone would like to make comments on any matter regarding the city of Sibolo or on an agenda item, to have this item read at the meeting, please email citiesecretary@sibolotx.gov or call 210-566-6111 before 5:00 PM the date of the meeting. We have six people signed up to speak. We're going to start this one off, I think it says Pam Hussin. I'm not sure if I got that right.
Yes, Pam, you can step up to the podium.
Pam Harrison, is that it? Or Hussin? Welcome.
You can repeat your name once you get up here.
Thank you. Welcome.
My name is Pam Harrison. I have lived in Sibolo for well over 20 years. I have some deep concerns of the last several projects that's been awarded. Mainly the one on Deer Creek Boulevard, the road that's been torn up. They were, the same contractor was awarded that did Sibolo Valley Drive, which nobody shows up to work. They tore the street up in May. Nobody's been working. They have not worked a two full week period at all since they've tore that road up. They were supposed to be done in August. Well, the end of July, they laid the first asphalt. Nobody has showed up since. Nobody's been working on that road. School is starting, AT&amp;T is putting their fiber optics in. Whoever awarded the same contract that did Sibolo Valley Drive is not good. And another issue, garbage. Whoever awarded that garbage contract did not review it. You guys did not review that. There's a lot in that contract that wasn't reviewed. I read it. And the city of Sibolo also wrote their own state of rules, which conflicted with waste management's rules. And this chip in the can, that's not to look. There's ulterior motives to that, because it states later that that chip will be used to see what's in your garbage or detect anything that's in your garbage. I don't have anything to hide. I don't care what's in my garbage. You know, this is something that you guys need to really look at. And just like that drainage dip up in the front, that's a total debacle. Everything that you have awarded has been a debacle, and it's wasting our tax dollars. This is not fair to the citizens of Sibolo. The last four years has deteriorated. You need to look for a new city manager, for one thing. And you need to really review these contracts that you're awarding. I was told that that contract was awarded without even the contractor being on site. Oh, just because he's the low bid. And then after he gets the bid, he signs these handicap wraps. The wraps, the ramps? Oh, they're not within regulation. He should have known that before the contract went out. This is not acceptable. This is not fair to the citizens of Sibolo. You guys dropped the ball, big time. And you should be ashamed of yourself, because it's a citizen's suffering. And that garbage contract, you write two different rules. You write your rules, and then they write their rules, and they contradict themselves. I called the city of Sibolo and asked them about that, and I says, "Well, people aren't very happy." You know what the response I got? That's the way it's going to be, get used to it. This is from your office. People are very upset, and they have good reason to be.
Okay. Thank you very much. Katie Cunningham?
Which project were you talking about? I'm sorry, I missed the street.
Which one? Deer Creek? Huh?
You were talking about Deer Creek Drainage and the-
Deer Creek Boulevard.
She's talking about Deer Creek. She's talking about the drainage on Deer Creek.
Yeah. And you know, the Sibolo Valley Drive, when they did that road, it took them a year, because nobody showed up to work. It's going to take them a year for this little stretch that we have in Deer Creek Boulevard, another year. Kids are getting ready to start to school. It's not safe. I almost got in a wreck yesterday because they changed the direction, and cars were coming in both directions on a one-way road.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Appreciate your attention.
You need to really think about it.
Thank you. All right. Next up is Michelle Meehan. Welcome, Michelle.
Good evening, everyone. So I just wanted to give a quick update on things that are happening with the Guadalupe County Children's Advocacy Center. Earlier this year, the National Children's Alliance signed seven MOUs with all the military installations and family advocacy programs, and that opened up local CACs to sign on to the MOUs, the memorandum of understandings as well. And we have done that. And so through that, it's going to help us add on our military affiliates, the investigation and the family advocacy programs to our protocols, so we can really just streamline the services and special needs that our military families do have. We have always provided services to our military families. This is just going to help, if they get transferred, to help connect them and open up the lines of communication and information sharing on cases that we share. So that is something new that's been going on for us. So we also have a volunteer orientation luncheon coming up on Friday, August 29th, at our Seguin office at 11:30. So if anyone is looking for volunteer opportunities, email me at the center and I'll get our information shared with you. But that is just going to, it's just an orientation on being a volunteer with our center and all the different capacities that can be happening. And then we also have a fundraiser coming up on Saturday, September 20th, at 6:00 PM at the Shirts Civic Center. It's called Let's Make Their Future Bright Bash Gala-type event, and it's going to be a lot of fun. Tickets go on sale August 27th. They are $50. And Stylin Hair Salon and Spa is our local ticket vendor here. And then Valance Security and Shirts, KDJ Insurance in Marion, and Gift and Gourmet in Seguin. So, and that event is going to support all of our strategic initiatives that our center has going on. So just wanted to let you guys know about the MOUs and all the good things that we continue to do. So thank you for your support, always.
Thank you. And real quick, before you walk away, does Peggy have your contact information, your email address?
I will leave my card.
If you don't mind, if you could provide it to our city secretary. She gets a lot of phone calls from the citizens, especially with the court, that are looking for volunteer hours. And so that way, we can get you all connected.
Yeah, for sure.
You could help out with people to volunteer.
And not just that, Mayor. If you can get her the information about that fundraiser?
Yes.
Where we can, if any of us want to be a part of it, that'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Next up is Maggie Titterington. Welcome, Maggie. How are you?
I am great, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. Just a few updates for you all. Tomorrow, welcoming yet another business into Sibolo. It'll be at 4:00 PM. It's Peak Performance and Functional Chiropractic, and they're located near the Endeavor Dental in that little strip center. They're very excited, can't wait to hear everything that they do. The next two luncheons that we have are going to be very informative. The one next Tuesday, we have Brigadier General Oakland, who's going to give us the state of the military, let us know what's kind of going on throughout JBSA, and probably a little bit talk about hopefully the new planes that are coming in, replacing the T-38s and all that good stuff. And then in September is the State of Education, and that is where Steel and Clemens are uniting to cook our luncheon. I've already seen the menu. It's delicious, so hopefully you all will be in attendance for that. We'll also be having presentations, not only from the school district and Paige Maloney, but also from some of the local colleges, so that we can kind of see what they're looking at with just the student count and the transition from high school into these colleges. On October 15th, as a reminder, meet the candidates for Sibolo and Green Valley Special Utility District will be at the Sibolo Community Center from 6:00 PM to 7:30. And we want to thank Shirts Bank and Trust, they are our sponsor for that event. And last but not least, we also have Skylight, our hot air balloon festival that is happening September 26th and 27th in our new home, which is Rotama Park. Very excited about that. Friday night, we have live entertainment with Chasing Keys. That's the dueling pianists that just, they're really engaging for all the audience, very family-friendly. And then on Saturday night is the Spasmatics. Fingers crossed, weather permitting, last year we had a good year, and we had two glows at night, and we had balloons flying around in the area, so we're hoping the same thing's going to happen. Tickets are online at skylightballoonfest.com. Very affordable, no charge for parking, just a charge for the tickets and then go in and have a good time. A hundred vendors will be present, and that includes 17 food trucks, arts and crafts, a family fun zone, which is also included in the price of the ticket. So as I said again, I think right now, everybody's watching their budgets, and so we're trying to make it very family, affordable, and family-friendly. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Maggie. Really looking forward to all those events, and thank you so much for everything you do for our community. Appreciate it. Next up is Haley Brooks. Welcome, Haley. With CASA?
I'm actually here for Section 6. I was interrupted to get in there.
Got it. Okay. We will call you back up for Section 6. Next up is Nicole Krab. Welcome, Nicole.
Thank you. Good evening. So last month, I spoke about the ordinance change for the five acres to the three acres to place a second home. So I'll keep this short. On July 8th, you all voted in favor of possibly changing the ordinance. Based on this preliminary vote, my husband and I felt confident enough to place our home on our property and held on to the hope that your votes would not change tonight. As I previously stated, this was a huge decision, because if your votes were to change, we will face the financial burden of having to find and purchase land and move our home, which will also void our home warranty. Our home has been sitting on the back half of our property for a few weeks now, and with every day that passes, we get more excited about moving in and having our first home together as a family. We hope that you still support this ordinance change, so that we can finally settle into our new home and make a lifetime of memories with our baby. So thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you so much, Nicole. Last on our list is Sherri McDaniel. Welcome, Sherri. How are you tonight?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to give a brief update on the Park and Recs Commission Fund Run Event that's being held on September 7th at the Steel High School. This is a free event for the whole family. First of all, I think you probably have seen or have in your packet our flyers. This is the participation registration with the QR code that was created, and printed copies are available for any businesses that would like to display one in their window. I have some available if anybody wants one. As of today, we have received 64 online registrations to participate in the front run, and we are eliminating it to the first 200 participants. The next is a signup genius volunteer QR code has also been set up for anybody who's interested in volunteering for this event. So far, we have two volunteers step up and volunteer. We have plenty of positions to be filled. The event has been added to the city's calendar of events. We just did a tour of the Steel High School yesterday, and we will be creating a site map for the event that shows where all the stations will be. We have, so far, we've secured a DJ, face painters, food trucks, and some vendors. If you're interested in being a vendor for this event, please email David Howard or Ashley Swift. We have received some donations from local businesses for our raffle, and would appreciate any other businesses that would like to donate. We're not asking for monetary donations, but instead gift cards, gift baskets, coupons for free items, or toys for ages 6 to 14. All participants that register for the Fun Run will automatically be entered into the raffle for various prizes. We also appreciate any businesses that would like to donate snacks for the runners, such as protein, granola, or fruit bars, bananas, apples, oranges, or raisins. All businesses that donate will be acknowledged by the DJ during the event. We'd also like to have the mayor and the city council members attend if possible. We did hear that Mark has agreed to do who with the mayor, so thank you, sir. Does anybody has any questions?
I'll do it. I'll do it.
Well, we do have the, I do have the QR code if anybody wants to sign it, to scan it and sign up for any volunteer positions.
Do you have extra copies of those that you can give us?
I do. And I think the city can probably print out more, because I only have four.
Thank you very much, Sherri, for all of the organization and the work that went into creating this to you and Parks and Rec.
And if anybody would like to spend some that are put on the seats, but if anybody liked one, I do have some.
Thank you, Sherri. Appreciate it. All right. That's it.
I think we have a full, full bunch of volunteers sitting in crowns over there.
Yep. I'm sure they'll help. All right. Next up is Item 6A on the agenda, which is the presentation of a five-year service award to Diane Guzman with the Finance Department. Welcome, Diane.
Come on, Deanna, you know you're a-
You mind if I read this real quick, Mayor?
Please do.
All right. So it's always great when you get to recognize our great staff here at the city of Sibolo, especially when they've got a milestone like a five-year award. So on behalf of everyone at the city of Sibolo, I want to congratulate you on your fifth anniversary of your employment. You joined our organization on July 20th, 2020, as the Accounts Payable Purchasing Clerk. This year signifies a key milestone in your service, and we'd like to celebrate your achievements with you today. We know that the growth and success of our departments is dependent upon having devoted and capable team members such as you, and we want to recognize the contributions you have made in helping us achieve our goals. As a valued team member of the Finance Department, you are responsible for processing 50 to 100 invoices each week, ensuring that all transactions are completed correctly and timely. In addition to these core responsibilities, you provide vital support during audit season, assist with risk management claims, and contribute to key performance indicator reporting. You also demonstrate the core value of teamwork, collaborating closely with Public Works Department's Fleet Division on vehicle additions and state registrations to ensure compliance and operational continuity. During the department transition in the fall of 2022, you served as the sole finance team member in the service area. It was me and you, girl. Your outstanding commitment in this challenging period led you to become, being awarded an Employee of the Year Award in December. The following year, your continued excellence in collaboration contributed to a group effort recognized with a Team of the Year Award in November of 2023. You furthered your professional development by becoming a Certified Accounts Payable Specialist through the Institute of Financial Operations and Leadership in August of 2024. A clear demonstration of your commitment to our core value of professional development. To honor your service, we present you with this five-year service award. People are and always will be our greatest asset. Please know that you're an important member of our team, and your abilities and contributions will be an important part of our continued success. Thank you for everything you have done for us over the five years of service and your ongoing commitment to our success. Thank you, Deanna.
Deanna, would you like to give a speech or anything? Want to give a speech or anything? You don't have to. You don't have to.
I'm just happy to be here, and I've worked with excellent team.
Yes, you-
So I am, I love what I do, and I am Team Sibolo.
That's right. Thank you very much, Deanna. Appreciate it. All right. Next up is Item 6B, presentation of our strategic partnership grants. And so I'm going to come on down there, and I will read off the recipients off the check. And then when I announce your organization, please come on up and we'll give you the check and take a picture.
Hey, let me know where y'all can cash that big check at.
At the big bank. Yeah, that's right.
All right. Who we got first? All right. CASA. Okay. CASA of Central Texas. Come on up, CASA. You're here. All right. We got your real check right here.
No worries. Oh, I'm so sorry. Can you also take a picture?
Yeah. That's the real check. The real check. $1,056. There's the real check. You can have that one too. Yeah, you can have it. It's okay.
I mean, you got to walk it over the big check, right?
Who we got next, Brian?
We got the SJRC Belong Youth.
All right. SJRC. All right. Come on up this side. Congratulations. This is for $556. And then get your real check.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Miss Sibolo.
Miss Sibolo, come on down, all of y'all. Welcome. This is a Miss Sibolo, and the amount is $2,127. All right. Bert, you want to help hold this? All right. Congrats. One more.
Lot of paparazzi out there.
Hi, my name is Quillin Green, and I'm this year's Miss Inspire. I would just like to take the opportunity to say thank you all for supporting our organization on behalf of all the girls in the Miss Sibolo Court. We're very thankful for your contribution to our scholarship program. Thank you.
All right. All right. Who we got next?
Guadalupe County Children's Advocacy Center. Come on up, Miss Sibolo.
This is $3,044.
All right. Get the real check. Last but not least. Northeast Lakeview College.
Northeast Lakeview College. All right. Help over here.
That's the best one, the psychology.
All right. For $1,056. Thanks, Quillin. You're welcome. Good seeing you. Thank you.
That's it, Mayor.
All right. That's it. All right. Thanks, Brian. Congratulations to everybody for the strategic partnership grants. All right. Next up is Item Number 7A, public hearing to hear testimony regarding the voluntary annexation request of Jessica Silviera and Hector Silviera, Silvare, sorry, of a 1.3108 acre tract, Lot 1, Block 1, shops of Sibolo Creek, ABS 110-S Dominguez, 240 Bright Road. Mr. Vasquez, welcome, Rick.
Mayor, members of the council, this is a voluntary annexation request from Mr. and Mrs. Salveda. The property is located at 240 Bright Road. It's a 1.3 acre tract. Here's an aerial view of the property. It's a front part of this commercial development. Here is a street view, and the applicant is eager to receive our excellent city emergency services and utility services. Tonight's just a public hearing. I will bring the ordinance back to your next meeting for formal action for you to annex them into the city. Any questions?
Thank you, Rick. All right. We're going to open up the public hearing. The time is 6:58 PM. If anybody is here to speak on this item, please come on up to the microphone. Looks like nobody's here to speak on this item, so we're going to close the public hearing at 6:58 PM and move on to the next item, which is 7B, public hearing to hear testimony regarding amending the 2024 Unified Development Code, UDC, Article 13, use tables, and Article 20 dot 1 dot 9, planning not required, and Article 20 dot 3 dot 17, development plats in section 14 dot 1 lot design. Mr. Vasquez, welcome again, Rick.
Mayor and members of the council, this is a public hearing, but you also will be acting on this ordinance this evening. It's later on in your agenda, and I'll give you the presentation for the public hearing. So the amendment to the UDC is for manufactured homes in the agriculture zoning district. It also includes reducing the subdivision plat exemptions from five acres to three acres and the development plat exemptions from five acres to three acres. Back on July 28th, the city council directed the staff to initiate the process to amend the UDC to allow manufactured homes by right in the agriculture district. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the proposed amendments, and the Planning and Zoning Commission felt that the regulations governing the unified, in the Unified Development Code, regulating manufactured homes as presently drafted is, should remain the same. They also felt the regulations governing subdivision plat exceptions should also remain the same. Just a little comparison between the existing manufactured home land use regulations and the proposed ordinance. The court, the current ordinance requires manufactured- The court, the current ordinance requires manufactured homes secure a conditional use permit, a zoning overlay, a zoning cases process for that use. In the proposed ordinance, it'll be permitted by right in the agricultural district and add a maximum of one dwelling unit per acre up to three dwelling units maximum. In second area with the cup permitted in the single family one district, minimum one acre of lot, requires a P and Z review and city council must approve the actual change. There's no change to that provision. And presently it's permitted, redundant, permitted with cup in the ag district, it will now be permitted by right. It's presently permitted by right in the MH1 and the MH2. The MH1 would be a mobile home park and the MH2 would be a mobile home subdivision. That will remain the same. No changes there. This is the way it appears in your Unified Development Code. This chart outlines the permitted uses and conditional uses under, as a manufactured home. In the SF1, it will still require a cup. In the MH1 and the MH2, it'll be permitted by right. And in the ag, we're striking the cup and it would, you were, approval of the ordinance would change it to be P, which is permitted by right. So just a little clarification on the land use we're talking about. You have mobile homes, manufactured homes, and modular homes. These are often confused as to what you're actually doing tonight. Your ordinance would allow manufactured homes by right in the agricultural zoning district. What a mobile home is, is a prefabricated housing type that's built in a factory and it predates June 15th, 1976. There were no regulations governing the construction of mobile homes up until that point and after that time HUD adopted standards and so that type of structure became known as a manufactured home. They're required to meet HUD regulations, not your local adopted international residential code, but the HUD, HUD regulations are required. And then a modular home is actually a home that's built in a factory, it's built in sections and then it's transported to a site for assembly on a permanent foundation. So the ordinance you'll consider tonight will allow the manufactured homes by right in the ag zoning district, a maximum of three on an ag zone tract, parcel, or lot. So there is a cap. Maximum density of one unit per acre. And the reason why we're requiring one unit per acre is if you don't have access to sanitary sewer, municipal sewer system, you can apply to the county if you have one acre or greater for a septic tank. And moving on to the second part of the ordinance, it addresses your regulations governing subdivision plats. What is a subdivision plat? It's a legal instrument used to effectively organize your local real estate market. The plat incorporates a boundary surveys, easement rights, rights of ways, legal descriptions, certifications of engineering reviews, all into a single record as opposed to having multiple records required in a transaction. The 2024 UDC requires a division of land to file a plat for review and approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission and the city council. And presently, the Texas Local Government Code exempts divisions of land that are five acres or greater and have access to utilities and transport, and public access and no public improvements. So the statutory exemption related to platting is that plat is not required for subdivision of land within a city when it's divided into parts that are greater than five acres and no public improvements are being dedicated in that process. That's a trigger for us. If public improvements are required, then we, in agreement, so we would require a subdivision What is a development plat? A development plat is not a subdivision plat. A development plat is merely a site plan. It, it, a tool that's used when you're not doing the complete subdivision process. You just want to have limited development on a single tract or lot and it's to ensure compliance with your other non-development regulations. We do allow development plats within the city of Sibilo. Is required to be prepared by a registered engineer, identify existing or proposed buildings, easements, and dimensions of any streets, sidewalks, alleys, or parks. The 2024 Unified Development Code exempts platting when the division of land within the corporate limits is greater than five acres and each part has 60 feet of frontage on a public street and no public improvements are dedicated. That is a section that we'll be amending from five to three if you approve the ordinance later on this evening. So the proposed amendments are reducing the requirement for platting from five acres or greater to three acres or greater and reducing the development plat requirements from five acres to three acres or greater.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. The time is 7:06 PM. We're going to open up the public hearing. Please come on up to speak. I see Kara Latimer's here to speak. Welcome, Kara.
Good evening, council. I hope you are having a wonderful evening. I am coming before you today to talk about this solution seeming an odd solution to us, to, to a problem that these people, that they didn't live in the city of Sibilo, would have a by right solution to, right? So if they were in the county, they would have a by right ability to have their child or their person of relation within three degrees of relation move onto the land with them and not be affected at all, subdivision, anything like that. That's done in Texas Local Government Code 232 dot 0015E, right? So they, they could do that. And when we originally were talking in the master plan about situations like this, we specifically addressed ag land to protect agricultural type activities and the feel and the fabric of our community that is ag. So we didn't just arbitrarily choose five acres. We debated it. We had discussion about it and it was critical to the understanding of what ag land use would look like because we do have rural residential zoning. We, we do have rural residential zoning that's below five acres, not in the SFs, right? Not in the single family units. So when you look at what you're doing to the zoning classification of ag, you are turning it into, if you're going to allow it to go from five acres to 2.5 acres, you're turning it into a density, a high density use. If you're looking at it purely from what he's saying, so if you're going to take it from five acres, take it down to 2.5, allow up to three dwelling units, one acres apiece, that density greatly increases what ag was intended to be, which is five acre tracts of land where people are homesteading or you, or have equine use or any of the agricultural type of activities that we would can, consider 1D1 uses, right? Where if you were living in the county in a 1D1 use, you would get a special valuation on your land and you would have some extra rights because you'd have the Texas right to farm. So the solution that is going to happen to you today would not harm me. I would not be harmed by this, if you pass this law. But I think the agricultural feel of every, of our community would be greatly impacted by this change. So I am not sure why you're being asked to go back and rewrite big chunks of some master plan where we talked about the future land use, we talked about the zoning categories. We, we had a body of citizens that discussed all of these things and set in motion what we consider to add. So you need to ask yourself, I understand you're under duress because you want to help people and I, I get that and believe me, I, I, it gets me in the feels. I'm so frustrated for this family that should have been offered a cup off the bat, waive that cup fee and put that family, make that family whole in their ag land, make that family whole in their life here in the city of Sibilo and in the county of Guadalupe. That's what we're trying to do, right? But what, but in consequence of what you're choosing to do will completely change ag's feel and ag's presentation to the public. So if you had a big tract of land, they're saying, well, we're going to limit you to three, right? Three houses, three dwelling units to add on. But then they're reducing the number of acres to 2.5. So it, it's, I don't, it doesn't even make sense. I, I understand that they're trying to handle platting administratively and to give you some examples of administrative plats, that would be one of the other subdivisions we had that was divided that was supposed to be single family units that you guys got into a little bit of a train wreck or traffic jam over putting a manufactured home on without a, a fire hydrant. So those, those were some administratively approved plats. So if we're going to move forward to where we're going to take away the review of the plats, those are the kinds of consequences that we have seen in the city of Sibilo in the past, okay? So this plan is basically stripping away, it, it, it's not just about avoiding the platting. It's about bypassing almost every tool the city uses to manage how land is developed. No plat, no cup, no development plat. This change creates a pathway for residential buildout on ag land with minimum city review and no requirement that the land stay ag in character or use. Do you understand what that means? We're taking an ag zoning and we're, we're changing the character and the use of the land. It is, it is, in my opinion, wildly inappropriate to do that. It would be like zoning my homestead commercial. So the solution is to cup these people under 232, waive their cup fee, and make these folks whole. Do not change ag's appearance. Do not change its use. Do not change its character or, or call it something else. You could make this a completely different classification. You could call it manufactured housing on the fly, right? And make it that because it's not ag anymore. It's not what the body agreed on and it's not what we moved forward. And this problem is a problem we have had in the past and overcome with a cup. So make this family whole, absolutely. They're, they're really in the right amount of a relation and they should be able to move forward with this. We've done it in the past. It seems like we're making the same mistakes over and over. Fix this problem by cupping it, right? Within three degrees of a relation, if they sell off that parcel of land or they do something different with that parcel of land, it comes back under the jurisdiction and control of the bodies, the legislative bodies and the public. The public has a right to how we develop our land. They have a right and a say in the zoning classifications. These people have, in the state of Texas, the Texas right to farm. These people are protected under the Texas right to farm. Give their family member the right to put their domicile on their land and do not change the flavor of ag. And, and do it, the cup process would have taken the same exact amount of time. I want that to be clear. You would have had to have a hearing, you, you should probably ask this, you would have had to have a hearing for the cup at your P and Z and you would have had to have your hearing for the cup here in front of you all. Same amount of time without changing the entire character of ag in the city of Sibilo. So I, I hope that you care about the character of our zoning classifications and that those things matter to you. So thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Latimer. Would the applicant want to come up and say anything else? You don't have to. I've just given you the opportunity. Welcome back.
Thanks. I'm super nervous and wasn't prepared for this, so I hope I don't screw anything up. But I just wanted to state on that, I do understand about the ag land and I'm in total support of ag land. Where we are, we're fixing to have a huge subdivision come really close to our area. So I feel like that isn't something related to us. I believe that people should have the right to choose what they do with their land. And when I first started this process back in February, I was, I was told about the cup. But I was also told it was going to take four to six months and that was time I did not have. I was told different things from different people and so that's why I'm here tonight, just to find a resolution. So I'm just hoping that you'll still vote in favor and let people do what they want to do with their land. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak on this item? If so, now is the time. Hearing done, we're going to close the public hearing. It is six, I'm sorry, 7:16. Move on to the next issue, which is consent agenda. All items listed below are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting held on January, I'm sorry, July 22nd. And B, approval of the minutes of the special city council meeting held on July 31st. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve both 8A and 8B.
Got a motion by Councilman Hicks, second by Councilman Mahoney. Please vote on screens. Motion carries 6-0. Next up is nine, staff update by Brian Huggins.
Thank you, Mayor. The first item is the recap of the Sibilo Summer Nights event, the Splash Pass, which was our last event of the season. We had over 800 people in attendance. Families enjoyed all the water activities, including water inflatables, water balloon battle. There was live music, food, and vendors and we want to recognize and say a special thank you to Credit Human for donating ice cream for the event. We had some really good resident feedback. People saying they really enjoyed it and had a great time. Onto our in-house striping projects. Our streets crew recently striped Buffalo Crossing at FM 1103 with a striped left and right turn lane. And they also recently striped Rodeo Way at FM 1103, installing a left turn lane and a straight slash right turn lane. Our FY25 street rehabilitation package number one is under construction. Deer Creek Boulevard from Cordero to Falling Sun, the southbound lane is now open to traffic. Traffic switch was yesterday on the 11th and phase two is expected to last 60 days. Green Valley Road, Dean Road to Westmont, the curb is completed, the ribbon curb. The final lift of asphalt will be placed tomorrow, the, the August 13th. And then Green Valley Road, Sibilo Valley Drive to Green Valley Loop, we're waiting on the schedule from the subcontractor on that. The street rehabilitation package number two, Silverwing, that's from Sibilo Valley Drive to Thistle Creek, estimated start date August 25th and the estimated construction time is seven days. Town Creek Road, Green Valley Road to Brentwood Pass, estimated start date September 8th and construction time on that is to be estimated to be 90 days. And then the last one on that pack, package is Firebird Run, which is Silverwing to Kipper. And the estimated start date on that one is early November and the construction time is 75 days on that. FM 78 Waterman Extension, that's Buffalo Place to Shady Meadows, excavation will begin this Thursday, the 14th. The Sibilo Community Center renovations are under construction. Demolition, demolition was completed, construction is on schedule and the projecting, projected completion date on that is September 21st. And that is all the major updates on that. Everything else is. Everything else is par for the course. I'll email this all to y'all, so you have it in your email.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, we're going to move on to 10A, discussion action and approval of the proposed charter amendments recommended by the Charter Review Commission. So I trust everybody on councils had a chance to review the charter amendments that were proposed. Do you want to come up here, Peggy? Did you want to say something?
So the Charter Review Committee did meet one more time after the last meeting, and they did go through all these charter amendments again, and they did vote on all of them, and they did approve all, all the, all the amendments that you see in your packet.
Thank you, Peggy.
So you have your choice this evening to either go through each and every one of them individually, and say that you would like to see those on the ballot, or not on the ballot, or you can approve them all as is and let the voters decide on, during the election. So this is not a time to debate these items, because that should have been done at the last meeting if you wanted to do that. If you want to debate these, then the ordinances to call this election cannot be done tonight, and you will have to have a special meeting on the 18th, because that's the last day we can call an election.
Okay. Thank you, Peggy. Does everybody have a copy of the proposed charter amendments? Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to go through them one at a time, and then if it, if someone wants to make a motion for each one, and then we'll approve them.
Is, is anyone going to be opposed, just approving them all?
Yes.
I will.
Anybody opposed to any of them?
Okay, if, if there is, then let's just go through them.
Okay, so we'll start with the A. We'll, we'll go quick. The first one is amendments to the City of Sibolo Charter revising and deleting any provisions which are repetitive of state law, repetitive of other sections of the charter, or otherwise unnecessary to be in the charter. So this is basically just a cleanup item.
Make a motion to approve A.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, A is approved. Next up is B, which is amendments to the City, City of Sibolo Charter for compliance with state law. This one, again, is just cleanup to make it work with this. Yeah, right.
I make a motion to approve B.
All, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, next up is C, amendments to the City of Sibolo Charter, changing the term districts to places, and provide for additional clarifying language as to qualifications for the office, mayor, and council member.
I did have a correction on this one, just to add. Everything was great, but on number three, where it designates the at-large council places shall be designated places five, six, and seven, it still doesn't designate them at-large places five, six, and seven. And I know usually for running in these positions, you have to signify that it's an at-large place.
On, on three, it says at-large, right?
No, it says the at-large council places shall be designated, and it just says places five, six, and seven.
Beginning of the sentence, it says shall be elected at large.
But it says, but rather it should read, the at-large council places shall be designated as at-large places five, six, and seven. Because otherwise, there's really no distinction between five, six, and seven, is what's following after the word designated. You're saying what it's going to be designated as after the word designated.
It's already in the sentence twice, in the paragraph twice. You want it a third time?
The first, the first sentence says it should, should be elected at large.
No, sure. No, it's, it's referring to as an adjective, the places that are at-large shall be designated places five, six, and seven without.
I don't know that they need, I understand what you're saying, because like on signs, when you're running, you have to put at-large place five. I don't, I don't know that that's necessary, but I think that, like to put it on the signs.
It was, yeah, I mean, with this whole redistricting and everything, it was certainly necessary for when I had to run for place five, when you, well, not you, but when we had to run, we had to put at-large place five, and this doesn't make it clear that it needs to be designated as at-large place five, six, and seven.
And maybe the charter group just didn't think they wanted that.
And just for clarity, are we allowed to input for some corrections, or are these just?
If you're making any corrections, we don't get, we'll either have to strike this one out, or they'll have to go back to the city attorney to reword it, and we'll have to call it a, a special, a council meeting.
Can we get a, a motion to approve this one?
With the city attorney.
So this is the number three that you're talking about?
Right.
C, Prop C.
Proposition C, down in three, the mayor agrees.
Well, I, I guess at this rate, we won't be able to make any corrections whatsoever, right?
We're either going to approve them or deny them. That's what we're doing tonight.
There's just no time giving. Okay, it just. Well, it signifies what it, just wait.
So down below, it does say, the mayor and three of the city council members shall be elected at-large. And the at-large council places shall be designated place five, six, and seven, so it says they're at-large.
No, sure, because the, the places, it's changing it from district to places, but no, okay, fine. I think for the, the sake of not striking this one, there's, you're just going to, the city secretary's office is going to probably just need to notate that on campaign binders and, and so forth, to let them know that they need to designate, otherwise.
And I believe Peggy does that already. I know she did that on my pocket.
Right, it just, it's just not written appropriately.
Can we get a motion for this one?
Make a motion to approve Proposition C as written.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that's approved. Okay, moving on to D, which is amendments to the charter, increasing pay for the mayor for, from $100 per month to 250 per meeting, a regular attended meeting, and for council members from 150 per month to 275 per regular council meeting.
That needs to be flipped.
It, it is, it's supposed to be reversed, and it is, I thought it took the wrong sheet in there, but it has been reversed.
Okay, good.
Okay. Okay, so that was just a typo, Peggy?
Yes.
Again, mouser, are 250 for councils, 275 for mayor?
Quite sure that there's two members of the, that we did approve, or three, four of them here, we did, it was approved by them, and it was reversed, probably that did change that.
Okay, all right. Do we have a motion for D?
I just have a question. I was kind of wondering why we couldn't make that new elected officials get $100, just like, I mean, and then upon your reelection, you start getting the 250.
Yeah, I don't think we're allowed to change them unless, you know, like Peggy said, we have to have a special meeting. Or can we change them?
We can, just like Peggy said, we would have the call of special meeting later to approve it after the attorney rewords it.
Better strike it and it don't go on the back.
So I've been on charter review, and it is a lot of work. It's a lot, it's very hard with a lot of different personalities, a lot of different input on different things. And I promise you, they have discussed every single potential thought that we could possibly have at length. And whether we agree with it or not, in my opinion, whether I personally agree with each of these measures or not, does not really matter, because we appointed a group of citizens to come up with measures, and they go to the voters for the voters to approve.
The voters have to vote on it.
And so that, that's just my opinion, y'all can have other opinions on that. But I, I think that if we start changing things, then that just drags it out even longer.
Okay.
Well, I like, I like the fact that it says regular meetings attended, so if you're not attending, you're not getting paid.
Right. Do we have a motion for D?
And, and, and for me, that, that means excused or unexcused. If you don't attend that meeting, you're not getting paid.
Motion for D?
I make a motion to approve D.
All in favor? Any opposed?
I am.
You are? Okay. All right, so motion carries five to one. Next up is E, amendments to the City of Sibolo Charter revising the prohibitions on the mayor and the council members to include prohibitions on directly or indirectly coercing, influencing or interfering in the city manager's judgment on personnel issues, directing or intervening in the administrative management of city personnel, requiring all concerns related to employees and administrative personnel to be submitted in writing or formally presented during a duly-called meeting of the city council, and requiring the city manager to address or investigate the concerns in accordance with the applicable city personnel policies and procedures. Do we have a motion for E?
I second that.
Got a motion by Councilman Roberts, a second by Councilwoman Roberts. Do we have a, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
At this point, Mayor, can we just lump everything else up, since I guess the decision has been made for the sake of time?
Yeah, that's fine.
To just approve everything.
Okay, make that motion, Norma, from F through, what's our last one?
V.
F, F through V? Yeah, make that motion, Norma.
I'd like to make a motion to approve charter amendments, Proposition F through V.
I'll second that.
Okay, I got a motion by Councilwoman Sanchez Stevens, second by Councilwoman Roberts. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so they are all approved, Peggy. Yes, of course.
Let's make that clear, votes.
Oh, yeah, we know how it works. Okay. Right. All right, next up is 10B, discussion on the waste connections transition. Councilwoman Sanchez Stevens.
I was praising waste connections, but your time is off. Oh, wonderful, wonderful. If you wouldn't mind coming up, we'd like to have a conversation, a couple of things. Obviously, transitions don't go without having some, some mishappenings. And there is a couple of big things that I think were, were missed. There is forgotten bulk in small communities, and residents were not happy about this. I do appreciate y'all coming out during the weekend. This was usually, I don't know why, usually a Friday happening with bulk, but I know there was other, for instance, the first week that we rolled out with a transition, people were reading down the schedule, they were with bulk that particular week, but first week bulk was not picked up. We were following the schedule, but then that did not happen. So I just wanted to, I, I just wanted to make note that, it, it was just interesting in receiving some information that we have GPS on our, on those trucks. I guess I had expected that, at the end of the day, waste connections would be tracking every single day which streets were hit or which ones were missed, that you can minimize these mishappenings, so I just don't know where the error was made, why small communities were missed, several houses all at one time. Another thing is, I wanted to mention is that our secondary bins were delivered late. I was one of those secondary bins, I went ahead and did it by Ju, by July 7th. I have compounding trash, because obviously, my second, other extra bin was just a standard black bin, and it was next to my waste connection, and it's not going to get picked up. So then now I have a compounding trash situation to where I'm, I'm, I don't know when I'm going to catch up, to be honest with you. If I'm in that situation, I wonder how many other residents are in that situation. So with that, with that, I was going to ask if y'all would allow for a little bit of catch-up for residents to possibly put their trash alongside their waste connection bin, so that we can make this right. So that way, we won't have additional bags at our homes, and so that we can just catch up all the way. And so I, I wanted to ask for that, and I'll go ahead and allow the rest of the council members to bring up their concerns, just to swear, but I did want to say thank you for coming on Saturday and on a Sunday for certain residents and, and delivering that service as it should have been intended. So thank you.
I do know that, I, I waited out there for the trash men to come by, and as she said, and there's still several people that have got their trash cans waiting out there next to them, because they did have that overflow, because it wasn't picked up. The, the truck driver goes, hey, no, I, I'll show you, right here, my GPS shows I drove right by here. Well, it shows that you drove by it, but that don't mean that you picked it up. I'll let you know the reason why, because the individual had put the trash out on Saturday thinking that Republic was going to pick up their last trash on Saturday, that was their last. So it sat out there Saturday, sat all the way, Monday came, nothing, got a call, hey, why did my trash get picked up? All the way to the next Monday. So I waited out there, and I dumped, I, I showed up.
And this was South, oh geez, this was South Street that you're referring to?
Yes, so you know, you know about it, okay.
So I will add.
But no, I didn't mean to cut you off, though, continue.
But so I waited, and, and I talked to him, he showed me, I said, that's fine, but I know that this trash has been out here for over a week. And so he dumped one trash, I took the trash can that was next to it, dumped it in, so where they could get caught up. But there's other individuals around the city that aren't caught up, and, and we need to make that right.
Yeah, no, I, so just to speak to all, or what you've brought up so far. The first thing regarding the routing, and it's kind of to your point as well with the, the technology that we have, we are able to follow, at the end of the day, what we call the breadcrumbs of where the, where the trucks went to. With the bulk truck, he, that was, we, so we went back and looked, but we didn't look at the end of that day, which we should have done. So we corrected that immediately. We actually even gave backup maps to that driver, because you have to keep in mind, that driver doesn't just have the one route, he's covering the whole half of the three routes of that, of that day. So he's got, he's covering more ground, more likely to make mistakes. We missed it, but we corrected it. And it was, it affected that whole little area, was South Elm, Ray, Pecan, and what's north of Pecan? Yeah. So it affected those, that area, but we looked at the rest of the breadcrumbs for that day, and there was no other streets that were totally missed. And then we followed closely the rest of the week, as far as the bulk truck goes. To your point regarding the, we can see where the, where the truck went, of course, but we can also see through the truck's camera if, if cans are out, or if they're not out, or whatever the situation is. But that time is finite. It only lasts about seven days. It depends on how much data the truck actually kicks back, or all the trucks cumulatively. I didn't find out about that one until literally the eighth day. So I looked back, and I had until the 20, 29th, but I didn't have the 28th, which I think Monday would have been the service day, so I was like, okay. But there were other people on the street that were serviced. He, he, you know, the drivers do make mistakes. We had, I think, one that was sent to me, yeah. Yeah, and, and, and they're out there to pick up the trash, and actually, that, that particular driver, he is my best driver in the entire fleet, and that's why he's working in the city. We wanted to, and he'll, he'll become our lead driver in the city. And, you know. Yeah, good. Good, yeah, so a lot of it is, we did a lot of pre-planning to kind of avoid any major mistakes. My, my level of expectation was very high coming into this, that, to me, a major mistake is leaving down an entire community. I was very concerned, you know, the guys would get their routing wrong, and we would just miss something. And of course, as luck would have it, on a Friday, we did make a mistake, and then, to the larger point about mistakes, they're going to happen. When they do, you know, our goal is to correct them within 24 hours. You know, we will send an extra truck out, or extra trucks out if we have to. In that case, I found out about the Persimmons, which was the area in Green, Green Valley, the loop on Green Valley. I found out about that on 2:00 on Saturday, and by 12:00 on Sunday, we had a team out there, and we don't, you know, my guys aren't typically working on Sundays. So we, we, and that, that would, that's not just something for now during the transition, that's our goal all the time, within 24 hours. If something happens in the morning time, we'll, we're out in the city, and we're trying to have that corrected before the end of the day. I'm on the phone with residents multiple times per day, you know, we're, we have a high level of expectation to get it done, and to get it done well. I think if you look at it, just the, the way I look at it, if somebody were to ask, well, how successful, or what level of success do you think you're executing? You know, I look at, my, my perspective is the entire community. If you're the one person that brought your trash out in the morning, and in the evening when you came home, it wasn't taken, you'd say, hey, this isn't going well. But when I look at the 11,661 homes that were serviced in Week One, and then you multiply that by two, so the 23,000 homes that were serviced in the first two weeks, you know, our biggest error was, was those 100 homes on Persimmons, which I don't minimize that. I wish, you know, to me, that's a major error, but that error was 100 homes out of 50,000, you know, so mistakes will continue to happen, and, and we'll, we'll work hard to correct them. It's not just about how quickly we correct them, but also getting into the details of what the root cause of those mistakes were, and making sure that we're not replicating that over and over again, that we're fixing it where it needs to be fixed, and that we don't make the same mistakes over and over again.
So I guess just an answer to my question, what can we do to make it right with compounding trash?
Sure, no, I, so we are actively do, doing that. As people have called us, we're actively out there. My bulk truck, which is the My bulk truck, which is the truck with the men, you know, the rear loader trucks, they're grabbing extra bags as they see them. Tomorrow, we're actually going to run an extra truck. The big... The issue, the main issue that we're getting the most calls about right now is actually all the leftover Republic truck cans from the previous hauler that are left out there. Yeah, so we're going to run an extra truck. There's some... I looked in the parking lot. We picked up 30 to 50 today out there. So we're going to send an extra truck tomorrow, too. Technically, we'll have my... An extra trailer where we're just collecting them and putting them over there, and then we're going to pick some up in a regular trash truck as well. So I will get with my team and see about running an extra rear-load truck through. But yeah, that's something absolutely I agree with, especially when we've been slow or made mistakes in delivering extra cans, you know. And, you know, for any of the mistakes, even for when the resident thought it was the wrong day and brought their trash out on the wrong day, or they didn't bring it out in time, I mean, we're doubling back, and we're getting those things. At the end of the day, we have to get them anyway, so we're, you know, we're giving grace and all these things. But yeah, on these ones where we made an error, absolutely, we want to correct it.
My neighbor had to remind her that trash is now on Mondays because she put it out Wednesday, and it sat there from Wednesday till yesterday. So and then this morning, I saw that she'd had a lot more trash put in there again, and I'm like, "Well, you have to wait another week," so.
Yeah, I mean, we... Yeah, it's... We're only restricted by the fact of how many times we have to double back, how that takes away from everybody else's service, you know. But we would... Yeah, no, it's...
Stone Brook was missing for bulk? Stone Brook was missed for bulk today, and we didn't have it last week. The app said it was supposed to be today. Stone Brook were just two streets, but I'm assuming if our two streets were missed, the neighborhood beside us, Sybalo Valley Ranch, might have also been missed.
I'll look into it immediately.
But like my husband said, "I'm calling my councilwoman to complain." Because we pulled everything out last week. I appreciate the curbside bulk. It really is nice to have that as an option. But last week, we pulled out the bulk. We separated it. It didn't get picked up. We had to lug it all back in the backyard. We pulled it all back out today, moved our cars out of the driveway so we could put it in our driveway, like at the end of our driveway, so that it would be the designated amount of feet apart, because we have neighbors with a bunch of teenagers, and then it wasn't picked up. So now when I get home from here, I don't know if my husband will have convinced my 14-year-old to lug it all into the backyard again, so I can park in the driveway if I'm going to have to park down the street again.
And that's Stone Brook Drive?
It's Stone Brook Drive and Slippery Rock.
Slippery Rock.
Well, that neighborhood, it's like a...
Yeah, I see.
It's an H.
I will...
It's little. I do appreciate it. I know there's growing pains. There's a lot of... A lot of neighborhoods, a lot of... One neighborhood in particular with all the street names that are almost identical, so it can get very confusing. But yeah, if we could not miss bulk again, that would be amazing.
No, it's... He has the most difficult... He has the most to memorize. Not an excuse, but I actually didn't foresee that being where the most errors would be made because it's actually the least amount of residents that put the stuff out. But we'll get... We'll re-go over and double back on it.
Yeah, and with anything, with any transition, there's going to be some growing pains.
Yeah.
And so I know that your company has done a really good job communicating with the community. And so just keep it up and just be agile and, you know, just do what you're... Continue to do what you are doing to be responsive and to solve any problems as they arise.
And for you all, your staff has done a great job communicating as well, so.
Thank you. Go ahead.
It's my understanding that y'all took on the customer service side of like getting all the phone calls and taking it out of the utility billing. Are... Is your customer service department aware of the fact that y'all have said that if somebody is disabled, that y'all will make accommodations? The reason I ask this question is I called literally a week before y'all were supposed to start, and I never got a phone call back. I was told I would get a phone call back, and I never got a phone call back, and the lady had no idea what I was talking about. And in case you don't know, I do have a prosthetic. I am disabled, and, you know, I can't take out a trash can. My, you know, my husband, yeah, he can, but, you know, sometimes he's not around or late at night or whatever. So I just want to make sure that your customer service is, you know, taking care of our residents and actually knows what y'all have promised to do for us.
Sure, and I'm glad you brought that up. I had some of our numbers with our customer service and the inbound calls and everything. But more, you know, I can... Well, just since I took them down, I'll tell you, and then I'll speak directly to your point. But in the first two weeks, we averaged roughly 300 calls a day, and the average hold times have been... What we strive for is two minutes, and they've been around five minutes. Over the last two days, that number has come down quite significantly. It's closer to 200 calls a day, and the average hold time's only 2 minutes and 37 seconds. So we kind of knew that with the transition that it would come down. The hold times were also exacerbated in the first week because of some other business decisions that we made in other communities that drove phone calls. So it's not all based on just, you know, the Sybalo transition. Now, with that said, generally to your point, I can't recall exactly within a week of the contract what we had and had not gone over at that point. I know a lot of information was thrown at the people in our CSR team. But we're working with them literally every single day now for the last two weeks to make sure... To even the nuanced points or when residents call and want to ask questions specifically about the contract, exactly how we're handling those responses. So we're being very, very hands-on with the CSR team to make sure that we're getting to the calls, we're answering the calls, and we're solving the problems, really, without the city having to receive another phone call from the resident.
Well, I will say I called again last week, still have not got a phone call or any resolution to my question that I asked. Not from you, but to your customer service, so. I just want to... I just want to make sure, because I know everybody's on y'all. So I just want to make sure that, you know, your people are aware of what y'all promised us. And if we're able to get that service, that's what we need.
Yeah, absolutely, sure. I'll follow up with them specifically on that point as well.
I mean, I'm not going to ask for it, but I was just trying to make sure it was something that could be done.
Maggie, come on up.
If I can, just for a moment. For that request, we have been provided a form that needs to be filled out through our office. We have had seven residents who signed up since that it's very simple. I need the assistance. We send them a list. They put it on the route. The guys mark the home specifics so they know. We also did provide them, I want to say, three addresses prior to the transition who were already receiving that service through Republic. So if you do come across anybody who needs that help, that needs to go through my team. We don't have it online. We want to make sure that it only is given to people who desperately or do need it. So that's something we can help with. And just to kind of double back on a few things, my team is learning growing pains with this transition as well. The first week was chaotic. We had probably 500 phone calls the first two days. There were probably 76 messages. I called back myself after hours because we could not get all of the phone calls. What we have heard for feedback from residents that were unaware or were not provided the opportunity through the Community Impact Letter that was delivered to them, the notes on the bills, the envelope notice, the Facebook information that Jeanette did a great job putting together with the help of Steve, short of being able to call every single resident or stopping by to let them know exactly what was happening. That's been the biggest frustration. This week, however, phone calls are down. We are... Zach came by and met with me yesterday. We ironed out a few things that were causing some confusion between our teams. And I think moving forward, it's going to continue getting better. If residents do let us know about issues, we are letting them know. Moving forward, you do need to call Waste Connections. You can use the app. You can use a phone number. But we'll send an email out right now. We've met with the team so that we know who missed calls need to go to. So and I did check with my team. We were unaware that Stone Brook had been missed for bulk pickup today. So but again, if somebody had reached out to us and let us know, we would have let them know before now. So we can try to get that taken care of and let residents know. Leave it out. They'll route back through tomorrow. Okay?
Thank you, and my complaint came in right as I was driving here.
Miss Hall, thank you so much. Appreciate your time. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, guys. All right. Next item on the agenda is C. That's Alt. 10C. Discussion action on the FY '26 holiday schedule. Ms. Taplin.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're going to discuss the FY '26 holiday schedule. First, we have some questions for Council. I will share the recommended FY '26 holiday schedule for your consideration and then seek Council feedback and direction. Our first question, do you approve the recommended FY '26 holiday schedule? And then does Council have additional input on the holiday schedule presented? As you know, you have the sole discretion of setting the fiscal year holiday schedule. Last year, when we were preparing FY '26 budget, you amended the holiday schedule with 13 holidays and one floating holiday. You added Christmas Eve back to our calendar, and that reduced our floating holidays to one. For FY '26, we're proposing the same 13 holidays plus the one floating holiday. You see Veterans Day, Thanksgiving Day, day after Thanksgiving, Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, New Year's Day, MLK Day, President's Day, Good Friday, Memorial Day, Juneteenth, Independence Day, Labor Day, plus that one floating holiday. You'll see Independence Day, we're celebrating, we're recommending to celebrate that Friday, July 3rd. Our handbook policy, any holiday that falls on a Saturday, the city recognizes it on a Friday and Sunday on the Monday. That is the recommended FY '26 holiday schedule.
Any questions on this?
Motion to approve 10C.
Second.
Anybody have any questions? All right, so we got a motion on the table from Councilman Hicks, a second by Councilwoman Cunningham. Please vote. Motion carries. You're not going to vote? Recused? Okay, all right. So motion carries five to nothing.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is D, Discussion Action Regarding the Economic Development Services Agreement Between the City of Sybalo and the Sybalo Economic Development Corporation for FY '26. Clancy Harden.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. What you have before you in your packet is the agreement that comes annually before City Council. This is an agreement between the City and the Sybalo Economic Development Corporation. This agreement outlines roles and responsibilities of the EDC Board of Directors and the city. It also provides for reimbursement of the city staff time for undertaking services for the Economic Development Corporation. During the June 12th Sybalo EDC meeting, there was a request by staff to ask if there were any changes to be made by the board, receiving none. The staff came back on July 17th during the regular board meeting, and the EDC Board approved it unanimously. One thing to note about this contract is the pay tables on the back of the contract reflect midpoint salaries. Yes, sir. They reflect midpoint salaries. That was done historically to even the scale for staff time spent. The EDC Board did approve this, and I'm bringing it to you all for discussion and possible action.
Well, I was going to ask you. I'm glad you brought that up. Did y'all go over the increases or possible increases from last year to this year on employees?
We worked with the Finance Department and the People and Performance Department to add those into Exhibit A. The EDC Board was made aware of those changes as we move forward in the budget process, and the table was provided by the People and Performance Department.
All right, that's the only question I have, Mayor.
Anyone else have any questions on Council? Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve 10B.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Hicks, second by Councilwoman Cunningham. Please vote. Motion carries zero. Thanks, Clancy.
Thank you.
All right, next up is Item E, Discussion Action to Allow the Granville C. Cogs Lodge, Number 668, to utilize the Sybalo Community Center for the children's toy distribution event at no charge on Saturday, December 6, 2025. And so I put this on the agenda because I've been contacted by the lodge a few times. They're trying to get started with their planning and their donations, or collecting toys and things like that. So they wanted to be able to get this on the calendar so that way they could utilize the community center like they've done for the previous two years in the past. And so they wanted to make sure that they definitely have the facility to do it. And this will be on the same Saturday that we do the Sybalo Parade and then also the Christmas tree lighting. So it'll be... The event will be right after the parade wraps up, and will allow all children in Sybalo to receive one toy, one toy per child. And it's while supplies last. But over the past two years, they had so many toys at that. I mean, there was no children going without toys, and so...
So my only thought is, since we're combining the parade with the tree lighting and market, right? Because the tree lighting usually has a market. First of all, is that building going to be used? Now that it's city-owned, will it be used for staging or anything? Do we already have a plan for that? That's my first thought. My second thought is I don't mind waiving rental fees for organizations. I've already recommended it for another... For a couple of other organizations. But I do want to make sure that because this is a new facility, and we probably should do it for all facilities, no matter what, we should have everyone still sign a contract saying that they're going to clean it and they're going to do everything. I'm not saying that this group is not going to do that. I don't think they've ever treated it poorly. But just that was something I was thinking about last week, is if we're waiving fees for groups to use certain buildings, I still want to have some kind of contract where we mark out the fees and put waived or whatever, but they still have to abide by the other terms of keeping it clean. If they do damage, they have to fix it. What equipment they're allowed to use, what equipment they're not allowed to use, and that kind of stuff.
The waiver for like, you know, insurance liabilities, yeah. So do we have a contract that we could just strike out the cost?
We are putting one... We're putting one together for the rental of the facility, and we can make sure that happens.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Sure.
Dunne, Roberts, did you have any questions?
No, sir.
No, okay.
So is the building already going to be used, and are they wanting the big room? I know they've done it in that side room.
Just that back room.
So that's a little... I know with the new layout, the floor plan of the Noble Group, that's going to be like a police dispatch area. I don't know that that spot will be available.
We'll do the big room, then.
Yeah, they'd have to use the big room, too.
That's fine. Big room's fine.
Okay.
Good motion.
I'm going to allow Granville C. Cogs Lodge, 668, to utilize the Sybalo Community Center once you send her six without charge. Second. I'd like to amend that motion to add what Councilwoman Cunningham said, which is they still need to fill out the application.
Okay. Okay, so we're going to include the rental agreement at no charge, but, you know, have them sign it. Okay. Motion carries six zero. Thank you, everybody. All right, next up is Item Number F, which is Discussion Action Regarding the Preliminary Acceptance of the Public Infrastructure for Saddle Creek, Unit 9A. Was this stricken? I think Mr. Ree called me and said it's stricken.
I was going to ask to table it. Mr. Otto and the staff have organized a walkthrough of the development for a few of us on Thursday. So we're going to be walking it and looking at it and really getting an idea of what's going on, and then hopefully speak with the developer and come to a something, some kind of compromise, because what's happening right now can't keep happening.
Motion to table 10F.
Was it pulled by the applicant?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So we're probably better off not tabling it. We don't have any shot clock issues, so let's just let it be pulled.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. All right, next up is G, Discussion Action to Set the Maximum Tax Rate and Set the Date for the Public Hearing on the Tax Rate and Subsequent Adoption of the Proposed 2025 Financial Year 2026 Property Tax Rate. Anna Miranda. Anna Miranda.
There's actually, in the front of that budget binder are some corrected public hearing notices. The first item on the agenda tonight for the budget is ten G, discussion action to set the maximum tax rate and set the date for the public hearing. On July twenty-eighth, we received our tax rate calculations from the Guadalupe County Tax Assessor Collector, and we presented these to Council on July thirty-first, noting that the budget is supported by the voter approval tax rate of fifty-two point two-six cents. The voter approval tax rate is a maximum rate allowed by law without requiring voter approval. It's a calculated sum of the NNR operations rate plus three and a half percent, plus the calculated INS rate and unused increment rate from the prior three years. The calculated voter approval tax rate for the twenty-five tax year again is fifty-two point two-six cents. And because the proposed tax rate exceeds the lower of the NNR or the voter approval tax rate, the governing body must take a record vote, publish required notices, and schedule a public hearing on the tax rate. State law requires that the vote to adopt a proposed maximum rate must be a roll call vote indicating at, any absences from the dais. Even though the Council votes to consider a proposed tax rate above the no new revenue tax rate, the Council may, as a result of deliberations, adopt a tax rate at or below the rates stated in the published notices. So this is setting the maximum rate that you would be willing to adopt and allows time for Council to consider the budget document, the proposed budget, give any feedback to Council, and may adopt a rate at the voter approval rate on, in September, or may adopt a lower rate, but cannot adopt a higher rate after setting this rate today. So there is a sample motion included in your Council memorandum. And then a roll call vote is required.
Is it this one in the front?
That's, it's actually from Agenda Link.
Okay, perfect. So I wanna preface this by saying, we talked a lot about this in our budget meetings. Nobody, nobody is cheering raising taxes at all. We had a huge shift nationwide with housing. The last few years, we've seen housing appraisals go up, 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 and this year, they have gone down. So even if the tax rate remained the same, the city would lose a lot of money. And money translates to positions most of the time. The, the fiscal team has cut a lot from the budget. And I thought, I, when I spoke into Mr. Reed about this, he said that you were going to, there was a list or a handout that showed what was cut from the budget?
Yes, and under Item J, we'll get into the budget presentation, and we'll go over some of those items.
So that was one of the things that Council unanimously pushed for, was cutting as much as we possibly could from the budget. The staff came to us with budget cuts, and we asked them to do even more, and they did do that even more. So this is not a vote to increase taxes without also trying to decrease our expenses. Things have gone up. Our dispatch contract has gone up a lot, like hundreds of thousands of dollars. There's other things that have gone up a lot. So raising taxes is nothing that any of us are happy about, but it, it's what we have to do in order to maintain doing business. So I moved to set a maximum two thousand and twenty-five tax rate of zero point five-two-two-six and set a special meeting for September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five at six-thirty PM in Council chambers.
And what vote percentage do you need out of? We have six people here that are able to vote.
We just need a majority vote tonight. Setting the tax rate, adopting the tax rate will require.
Gotcha.
And this is just setting the maximum that we could possibly go to at that September eighteenth meeting. This does not set the final tax rate.
That's right.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilwoman Cunningham, a second by Councilwoman Mahoney. Please vote on screens. All right, motion carries four to two. And then, just to remind everybody, when we do vote on the, on the actual rate, which is included in the budget, that's gonna need five out of seven, is that right?
Five out of eight.
Five out of eight, okay, right. So. Yeah, I, I know, but.
But it counts the, the total eight in calculating it.
Right. So there, there'd be no way I'd be voting on that because it requires five. So, so me breaking a tie wouldn't, wouldn't get us there.
Right.
Because we need five.
In calculating, in calculating, you still count the entire body?
Okay, thank, you answered my question, thank you. All right, next up, anybody have any questions for her? No, we're good. Did you have anything else for us?
I have the next item.
Okay, sorry. Next one is the H, discussion, action, and direction on the FY twenty-six proposed fee schedule. Ms. Miranda.
And in the back of the budget binder that you received are some revised pages. Highlighted in yellow were some page, some changes made from the fee schedule that's in your packet. There were not a lot of changes proposed in this year's budget. I know we made a lot last, last year to the fee schedule. But on Schedule A three, on page six, the solar permit fee for commercial businesses recommended for adjustment. If approved, the fee will be based on project valuation rather than a flat fee for commercial. Residential solar permits will, will remain at a hundred dollars. But the commercial will be based on a tier system like the building permits are. Also, on page eleven, under environmental health permits, staff recommends basing health permits for retail food establishments on gross annual volume of food sales and using a tier structure for the fee and separating permits for school food establishments. Staff also recommends adding a fee for fire inspection for mobile food units and an option for multiple event permits. On page sixteen, Schedule A five, was added to distinguish between planning fees and public works fees. Staff recommends adding a fee for rights-of-way applications and inspections on page sixteen and a charge, or a change to site inspection fees to be based on a rate per center line mile. Schedules A seven and A eight, on pages nineteen and twenty, we're, we're recommending adjusting hourly rates for police and fire personnel based on the changes in market compensation last year. On page twenty-six, Schedule A ten, utility rates reflect the changes discussed at the July fifteenth budget workshop for a two percent wastewater rate increase. Water rates will be brought to Council after the conclusion of the utility rate study. Page twenty-six also shows elimination of the chipper fee. Schedule A eleven is, facilities, and staff recommends increasing rates for park pavilion rentals and fields and adding security deposits as well as a minor increase for the senior program participation and events, and staff also added fees for rental of the community center. And that's on pages twenty-eight through thirty. And those are the, the biggest changes on pages twenty-eight through thirty of the fee schedule. Does Council want to go over any one of these in particular, or have any questions on any of these in, in particular?
I actually do have a couple of questions real quick, just regarding to the background information. In the second paragraph regarding Schedule A three, the last section says, staff also recommends adding a fee for fire inspection for mobile food units and, and option for multiple event permits. Just curious to, how is it currently being done, write me out, with the fire inspections for mobile food units?
So that's currently done through our third party? Through, through our third party, they, they do the fire inspection?
So is that currently being done right now, or is it something new that's gonna be done?
They, they currently do fire inspections of the, of the vehicles.
Okay, I, I guess, because I read it when it said adding a fee for fire inspection for mobile food units. I mean, it, I guess it implies that there was never a fee before, so I was just curious too. Are we now creating something new as far as?
I, I believe my understanding is that there was a House bill that passed the legislation this year that changed our inspections on mobile food vendors in general. And so food trucks are not required to have a permit from the local jurisdiction, but from the state. But this is a fee that, or this is an inspection that we, as a city, can still perform on a mobile food truck. Where, where I believe it was probably done together as part of the mobile food vendor fee under the annual health permit for two hundred dollars and the event permit for forty dollars that's, that is struck through. The fire inspection may have been included in that.
You're correct. There was legislation that was passed this current that required.
It allows food trucks to operate without a permit from the city.
They had to be licensed through the, the state.
Through the state. But we can still require a fire inspection. So I think that's why the, the city, the city's building official, Matt Hanson, recommended this change.
Regarding Schedule A five, second, the third sentence says, staff recommends adding a fee for rights-of-way applications and inspections shown on page sixteen. Can you describe in which instances we would need to add those fees for rights-of-way applications and inspections? Does this pertain to signage for new developments, whether it's commercial or residential? What are these right-of-way applications and inspections, and why are we adding a fee?
I think that Mr. Gomez can answer that.
So currently, right now, we don't charge any fees for right-of-way, for right-of-way reviews. We have a consultant that reviews right-of-way permits for third-party utilities that come in, that work within our right-of-ways. And there, the process wasn't, there wasn't a process before. They would submit something through NGO. We would get that, and it would just go through the process. There wasn't a actual review of that. So now we have our third-party work, our city engineer consultant, reviewing these applications. And so that does come with a fee. So we're putting that fee on the people that are, on the utility companies that are coming in and requesting the service so that we are, our city engineer can review that, and then we charge them that application fee.
I, I had a question regarding Schedule A seven and A eight. It says, staff recommends adjusting hourly rates for police and fire personnel on pages nineteen and twenty, respectively. I was just curious, who usually requires these services for these additional public safety personnel?
It's for, Chief, it's for officer vehicle, for emergency call-outs for police, and for fire watch and fire standbys for the fire department.
Yeah, I think one, one of the things that we've been looking at is when we deal with emergency call-outs or even some of the accidents that we're working on some of our major freeways that have caused our officers to come down and to, to deal with those type of things, looking for ways for us to be reimbursed for some of the services that tie our officers up for sometimes hours at a time, and find a way to recoup those fees.
For instance, if we had a hazmat call-out or a overturned tanker truck on I-ten or something of that nature that causes a long-term response from our officers, we're looking for a fee that we can charge the insurance company for having the road shut down for such a long period of time.
Okay.
I thought we'd already looked at that.
We're just amending the fees.
Okay.
To, to account for the market adjustments.
Correct, yes.
Any other questions? Can I get a motion?
Hold on, I do have one quick question. I'm, I'm going to assume it's in part of our general fund where we have an expense for, like, the Chamber in Tri-County. Due to memberships. Yes. Where exactly is that? And why do we belong to both of them? We get more services out of the Chamber, and they support the Sibolo businesses, it seems, a lot more than what I've seen from Tri-County. So I'm just wondering if that's something that could be a potential cut. Not the Chamber, but Tri-County.
They're, they're actually pretty valuable. We, we, we go to a lot of Tri-County events. They do the elected officials reception. They do things throughout the year. Yeah, it's not part of the fee schedule. All right, do we have a motion for this one?
But we can't talk about it at budget, during the budget item.
Do we have a motion for the fee schedule?
I make a motion to approve ten H.
I'll second.
Vote on your screens. Motion carries six-zero. Thank you. All right, next up is I, discussion action to set the date on the public hearing for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six budget. Ms. Miranda. And so we know that Jeff gets back on September eleventh. And so what date were we, were we looking at?
September eighteenth.
Eighteenth, okay.
And that's the date that was just set for the tax rate public hearing. Our, our charter and local government code also requires a public hearing on the budget. And we're asking Council to set that, that date and time tonight to, to agree with the tax rate public hearings of September eighteenth.
Okay, make a motion to accept September eighteenth as the date for public
Second.
Hearing. And set the rate.
Thank you.
Down that date.
Motion by Councilman Hicks. Who's second? Cunningham, okay. All right. Okay, um, yeah, looks good. All right, so we're gonna jump around a little bit, since Mr. Reed's not here yet. We're gonna go into the ordinances. We're gonna go to eleven A, approval/disapproval of an ordinance of the City of Sibolo providing order and notice of a special election for adoption or rejection of proposed amendments to the existing Sibolo City Charter. Peggy Simics, did you have anything to comment on this, or no? We're good, okay.
I make a motion to approve eleven A. Second.
All right. Councilwoman Cunningham made the motion. Norma Sanchez Stevens did the second. Please vote. Approved, six-nothing. Next up is Ordinance eleven B, approval/disapproval of an ordinance of the City of Sibolo ordering a general election for the purpose of the election of Mayor and Council members to places two, three, and seven. Valerie Chapman, do you have anything to say? Okay, motion, please.
Make a motion.
Second.
All right, a motion by Councilman Roberts, second by Councilwoman Roberts. Please vote. Approved, six-zero. Next up is eleven C, approval/disapproval of an ordinance to amend the two thousand and twenty-four City of Sibolo Unified Development Code, UDC Article nineteen, General Subdivision Standards, Section nineteen-nine, Drainage and Flood Hazards, subsection C, General Provisions, and Article twenty, Subdivision Regulations, Section twenty dot one dot nine, Plating Not Required. In Article ten, Parking and Loading Spaces, Section ten dot two dot one, Off-Street Parking, and Section ten dot six dot five, Surfacing and Maintenance. Mr. Spencer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this ordinance is proposed. It had its public hearing at your last City Council meeting, and today, we are having this up for discussion and action. So it's proposing that properties within the Old Town District be exempt from plating requirements in Section twenty point one point nine, the drainage regulations in Section nineteen point nine point C point one, as well as some parking requirements related to the minimum number of parking spaces as well as the surfacing material. as well as the surfacing material for parking within Article 10. And so we've had the public hearing at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on July 9th. Their recommendation was approval. That was subject to a few revisions. They are listed here within your packets. At the last meeting, we had these also called out and color-coordinated to show which were the planning and zoning commission's revisions. And those are also listed here. City Council, again, we also had the public hearing at the July 22nd meeting. So just to give a little bit of background about Old Town, we had previously gave a presentation about the Old Town District with, before we kicked off our Old Town Master Plan project. This was adopted in July of 2010, creating that Old Town mixed-use district. And we have the intent of that district, which is also within our code, within section 4 point 7 point 4 point 4. Just to emphasize that the intent of this district is to limit specific impacts to adjacent properties while enabling flexibility and planning to the developing owner. And I underlined flexibility because it's used twice within the intent of this district. So that is something to keep in mind going forward. Since 2010 of the adoption of this district, there has been several amendments within the UDC to accommodate this area. And so just to frame this, how we have it currently, within our UDC, we have certain relaxation of requirements for the zoning district. And so you can find that in Article four. We have landscaping buffering requirements that have some sort of relaxation or exemption in Article 17. And the same goes for transportation in Article 18. And individual ordinances were passed going back to 2013 where we have a TIA exemption for properties in Old Town. That was under ordinance 1048. And then we had in 2023, two ordinances, 1400 and 1423, which had some further provisions for Old Town that granted certain relaxations. And then in 2024, we had ordinance 1441 where the Old Town was exempted from the sidewalk requirements. And so within this new proposed UDC, again, we're going to keep those same requirements or exemptions. Nothing will change here. However, we will be proposing the same exemptions that were previously discussed in terms of the parking with the subdivision standards, so plating, as well as the drainage requirements. And so this just breaks it down a little bit further in terms of what's currently being dealt with in our UDC and what's being proposed. Right now, all, all properties within the Old Town are required to plat. And what's being proposed is that these historic tracks are exempt from plating. And we'll go into that a little bit further. Same thing with drainage. A drainage study is required. Old Town, within this, within this amendment, they would be exempt. We're proposing a regional drainage approach. And then with parking and the off-street parking, we're looking at the alternative parking materials being permitted. Whereas within the current UDC, they're limited to just concrete and asphalt. And then with off-street parking, it being optional rather than required. And so with plating, the, within the UDC, we're proposing that properties that can qualify for this exemption be that the boundaries within the property were established prior to 1965, which is the city's incorporation date, as well as having public access through a dedicated street easement or right-of-way, as well as having the existing utilities on site. And so essentially, rather than having to go through plating, site plan, building permit, and all the other processes involved, they can bypass that plating process and go straight to site plan and permitting. In terms of drainage, the proposed amendment is looking at an area-wide drainage approach rather than a parcel-by-parcel approach, which has been taken thus far. And so with an area-wide drainage approach, we have had, had discussions with our EDC board with taking on the possibility of an area-wide drainage study. So that could go towards our consulting engineer and have area-wide drainage be addressed rather than lot by lot and having that burden on the property owner that puts it back on the city. This could be a potential solution to the problem rather than to keep perpetuating the problem. And so that's what's being proposed there. And then in terms of off-street parking, again, this will be based off of the property owner. And so if we have an independent local business owner, they can determine the level of parking rather than having to look within our UDC, which is more of a one-size-fits-all. You don't have parking regulations within our current UDC that are specifically tailored to Old Town. The same type of business is wanting to be developed on FM 1103. They have to have that same amount of parking in Old Town, which doesn't quite make sense, given the, the small lot sizes within Old Town that are being developed. And same thing goes with the parking materials within our UDC. It's requiring those materials to be paved. And if you look at the definition of paved within the UDC, it, it states that it should be concrete or asphalt. And so shown within the pictures on this slide, you can see that hasn't really been implemented all that well throughout the years. There's hodgepodge of different surfaces within Old Town. And so what we're trying to do here is just codify what's actually on the ground and actually allow our small, small business owners to apply for an administrative approval for these parking materials. And so within your packets, as well as just the criteria of approval for a UDC amendment, and staff believes that this meets each of these requirements. If you have any questions, we're available.
Councilman Hicks.
The drainage. I know that you're saying that the EDC is possibly looking at, or y'all are going to ask the UDC, or the EDC to take care of this. That could be a, a problem because if we have nobody watching over or making sure that they are putting in the right, or the proper drainage for, for whatever businesses that they're going into, and then it leaks over onto the neighboring properties. You just said that it puts the city at risk. Well, you know, that, that's exactly what it's going to do, is put the city at risk. I, I just want to make sure that, you know, we, we make sure that we have some type of backfall here to where it doesn't come down to that. I mean, we, we should have people out there inspect it. Well, look, what are you going to do to check this drainage? Because if it goes onto your neighbor's property, that's going to cause a problem. I, I just want to make sure that we're clear on that, that even if y'all don't do that study, who's going to be ultimately responsible for checking to make sure that somebody isn't having water, excessive water because they put all this concrete and all these different, you know, buildings, and then all the water's coming off onto other people's property?
Yeah, no, that's a great point. So we, we put within this proposed ordinance, if the property owner is going to develop the property and expand 30% or more of the cumulative square footage of those buildings, then they would not qualify for this exception in that they would have to go through the normal standard process of going through the plat process as well as the drainage study, and so on and so forth. So if, if they're using the existing buildings and structures on that property and they're not increasing impervious cover, then they fall within these exceptions. However, again, if they increase that by 30% or more, they no longer qualify.
And where is that written, Mr. Spencer? Thirty percent. I don't think I saw it anywhere in our presentation packet.
Not in the presentation, but if you look at page two of the ordinance, it, it says, however, if the cumulative square footage of all existing structures is increased by more than 30%, this exemption shall no longer apply. This is the second-to-last sentence on that page. Page two of the ordinance.
Yeah, I see it.
I want to say thank you. This addresses a lot of concerns that I've had for years and years and years. We had the Old Town overlay. We rezoned downtown. It's a great idea. We have the Old Town Master Plan. We set it on a shelf and we didn't do anything else. And so a lot of the Old Town properties do not fit our UDC. And this is a really good step in the right direction to make it so that business owners who do want to build downtown or renovate an existing structure are able to do that without having to jump through a million hoops to try to fit into regulations that don't fit their property. So I really appreciate that. One question I have about the parking lot surfaces, totally good with it. But if a business has a gravel surface, do we have a code in there that says how well it has to be maintained? That stuff drains away. It gets into the street. It, it goes. It's not going to last forever. Is there something to ensure that it's maintained, so it's not just dirt and a muddy mess?
Yeah, yeah, no, that's another good point. So specifically within Old Town, within our regulations, we have something relating to a dust control plan. So that dust control plan, whether it be any sort of colicche or something that kicks up dust, or if any of the materials get into the roadway, they have to control that. So that is defined within the UDC currently, and that is an enforcement mechanism.
Thank you.
So, so to her, her question, I, I know that people are thinking it's great for the reuse of the old asphalt. But that old asphalt, unless you put a seal coat on it, it's going to eventually crumble into just little pebbles. And they get on the sidewalk and then they cover the sidewalk. Are our code enforcement going to go out there and make sure? Because if somebody slips on that, it's on the sidewalk. It's no longer on that property owner. So the city will be liable if they slip, fall, and hurt themselves. Then we're having to take and use our insurance to cover it. So I want to make sure that our code enforcement's going out there and making sure that the sidewalks are clear of any of this, whatever they decide to use. Because I've seen it time and time again where that reused asphalt, it just turns into crumble and then a good rain comes and it's all over the sidewalk.
Yes, sir. Do we have a motion for this one, please? 11C.
I make a motion to approve 11C.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilwoman Cunningham, second by Councilwoman Roberts. Please vote. Got an abstain from Hicks and affirmative by the remainder. Motion carries five to zero. All right, moving on to item 11D. Approval disapproval of an ordinance to meet the 2024 City of Cibolo Unified Development Code, UDC Article 14, Lot Standard Design, Light Industrial Building Height Standards. Mr. Vazquez.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. This is another UDC proposed amendment. This deals with the, start again here. They can pull up the screen. So the key factors influencing the need for ceiling height increases at our contemporary manufacturing, manufacturing facilities are seeing a trend towards higher ceiling heights. The automation and efficient storage solutions are requiring that buildings in industrial areas provide additional height. These new systems are designed for optimized picking and packing and accommodate future technological advancements and operational changes and specialized manufacturing and equipment. I do want to point out that this ordinance amendment only applies to those light industrial zone properties that are located on I-10. It does not apply to any other industrial zone properties in the city. Just those purple-colored properties will be permitted this additional building height. Here's some examples of that rack storage that is taking place in these industrial warehouses today that can reach up to 115, 50 feet in height. It's not 100% of the building. When you see the design of these buildings, it tends to be a certain percentage of the building. Higher structure is required for that storage. The rest of the normal manufacturing can take place in what's standard manufacturing building heights. Here's a couple of more examples. There's a Chick-fil-A manufacturing plant, and they have the higher storage racks in the back where they keep their frozen product for processing. And then here's another look at the exterior of another building with a section with the higher roof section. We did ask the fire department to provide a review of the issue. Fire chief said he had no concerns with the increase in height regulations. A building would have to provide adequate fire flow as required by the 2021 Fire Code, Appendix B and D.
Thank you, Chief, for answering that form of call. I appreciate it.
And again, just to point out, these are the only properties in the city that will qualify for the additional height for that storage. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I do. So are, are you saying that our light, it will not change our light industrial zoning requirements? That's like a designated zoning for that particular area? So if we were to look on our, on our charts, it would specify separately light industrial zoning, the common, and then, okay.
Yep. It's in the ordinance. It specifically states for only those properties located along the I-10 corridor with Bolton Road parallel to the city limits. So it's south of Bolton Road.
Any other questions, Hicks, or you guys got any questions? Katie, go ahead.
This is just really tall. And we don't have anything down there right now of any kind of substantial height. 140 feet is like a 10-plus-story building. That's a lot. There are still people down there who farm. There's still people down there who live. And having this giant skyscraper-looking thing is going to be a big change. I'm not necessarily opposed. I think that we do need some more industrial down there to help offset property taxes desperately. But I do hesitate to just flat-out approve. What, is there a limitation on the percentage of the building that can be above a certain height? If we have a, a building that's 1,000 feet by 1,000 feet and then 140 feet tall, that's really big, as opposed to that same footprint, but only 25% of it is 140 feet.
Sure. We are working with one prospect that initiated this request for the increase in height. They did not specify that there could be a limit on the building percentage. So we didn't draft the ordinance in that way. It really is leaving that decision up to the, to the property owner.
Thanks, Rick. Any other questions? Mahoney, do you want to make a motion?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion on the table for 11D. Please vote on your screens. And it was seconded by, was it Hicks? Hicks seconded, okay. Okay. All right. Katie, you going to vote? Okay, motion carries four to two. Next up is 11E, approval. Next up is eleven E, approval, disapproval of an ordinance to voluntarily annex a 2.011 acre tract of land located northeast intersection I-10 and Santa Clara Road, described as Guadalupe Torres Survey A 313, Guadalupe County. Rick Vasquez.
Mayor and members of the commission, this is a voluntary annexation request by R T Industrial Holdings for a two-acre site. The present zoning is light industrial. The owner does own the abutting tract. It's a hundred and twenty-seven acres. The portion that is being annexed is this triangle right here adjacent to their larger property. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Can I get a motion?
I make a motion to approve eleven E.
Second.
Got a motion on the table by Councilwoman Cunningham, second by Sanchez Stevens. Please vote. Motion carries six to zero. Welcome to Sibolo. Next up is F, approval, disapproval of an ordinance to amend the 2024 Unified Development Code, U D C Article 13 Use Tables in Article 20 dot 1 dot 9 Plat Required and Article 20 dot 317 Development Plats in Subs, I'm sorry, in Section 14 dot 1 Lot Design. Rick Vasquez.
Mayor, this is the ordinance related to the public hearing held earlier this evening related to governing both manufactured homes in the agricultural zoning district and subdivision plat exemptions for tracts five acres or greater to reduce that to three acres or greater. Again, the city council directed the staff to bring forth an ordinance to amend the U D C to allow an additional, or to amend the restrictions on manufactured homes in the agriculture zoning district and requirements for plating. This is the land use table that will change in the U D C for manufactured homes in the agriculture district from a conditional use permit required to a permitted by right. As far as regulations of the subdivision of tracts, the U D C currently provides provision that any division of property within the city must be legally platted and go through the subdivision process unless they meet the state exemptions with five acres or greater. Now, we would use a local option to reduce that from five acres to three acres, as long as the property has public access and no public improvements are required. That is consistent with the state's requirement. I do want to walk through the ordinance here just to point out to council what the actual amendments are that are happening. You saw the amendment to the use table. That is the first amendment in the ordinance, and that is converting the land use manufactured homes from a conditional use permit to a use that is permitted by, by right. That's change number one. In addition to that section, there is now a requirement that the maximum number of dwelling units, and that could be a single-family stick-built home or that could be a manufactured home. It could, any type of dwelling unit, there's a maximum number of three per lot, tract, or parcel. So if you have one acre, you get one. If you have three acres, you can have up to three. If you have a hundred acres, you can have up to three. If you have five hundred acres, you can have up to three. So there is a cap on the amount and number of units. We've also clearly stated, because there was some confusion in the discussion about allowing mobile home parks or manufactured home subdivisions through this position or recreational vehicle parks. There's a provision now that says this, this exception does not apply to those uses. The next amendment in your lot design standards, it requires a maximum of one acre per dwelling unit. So you have to have at least one acre per manufactured home. And then the lot has to be a minimum of forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet, which is one acre. The next amendment relates to the subdivision ordinance, and that is that you're merely exempt from plating if you have a tract that's three acres or greater and has utilities and has public access to a roadway and no public improvements are required. If you have a public improvement, a drainage facility, a street extension, sewer water line, that would trigger plating. That would be a public improvement. So then we would require that you go through the subdivision plat. And then the development plat is similar to a subdivision plat, but it's not as rigorous as a subdivision plat. It allows a property owner that has, will have three acres or greater, presently it's five acres. If they have access to a roadway, if they have utilities, they can merely provide a site survey, which is a boundary survey, and they're not going through any of the engineering reviews that are required for stormwater, sewer, water lines. They can file what's termed a development plat. And that would be, that would also allow them to move forward to building permits. And those are the amendments that are covered in this ordinance. It does not amend any of your comprehensive plan, your, it doesn't change the base agriculture zoning district. We're not adding uses or deleting uses to the agriculture district. We're merely taking the manufactured home land use. And instead of requiring that they file an application for a cup, they're allowed to go through the permitting process directly and, and secure a building permit.
Katie, go ahead.
Sure. So I just wanted to clarify some comments and questions that I've gotten about this for the past few weeks. This original ordinance to, to allow dwelling units by right on five acres came about because we had three or four requests right in a row where there were property owners who wanted to give some of their land to a child, to a relative, so that they could build a home on that same property. Our original U D C required them to subdivide and follow the subdivision regulations, and it was just a whole big thing. Councilman Benson was actually here, and he said, why do we require this? If it's their family, they should be able to live, move in their family onto their property. It's ag. It's plenty of, plenty of space. So we, the council voted on this ordinance. It wasn't a part of the master plan. There is nothing about five acres in the master plan. But council voted on this ordinance, I don't remember when, but within the last year, to allow by right, you'd put a second dwelling unit on five acres. I, I know that there is some concern about protecting ag activities. Our original ordinance with the five acres does not have a limitation on how many homes you could put on there. So this ordinance does include, as Mr. Vasquez said, it limits it to three per property. So if you have a hundred acres, you get three. If you have seven thousand acres, you get three. It does limit that. So we won't have the risk of someone changing their property to ag to sidestep any kind of subdivision requirements. They still have a maximum of three that they can put on there under this if they are ag and they fit the other requirements of this. I also heard that this may be changing the character of ag. In our master plan, we actually already changed the character of ag. We moved to place types. And that place type for ag is now rural, residential, agricultural, and undeveloped. Those three are lumped together in one place type. In the future land use map in our updated master plan, this area, which is the farthest southeast piece of Sibolo that you can possibly get, you would drive out there and not even think that you're in Sibolo, they are still on the future land use map as that rural residential ag, undeveloped. So the place types are explained on page twenty-seven, thirty-eight, and page fifty on the master plan. So they would still be that rural residential ag. They would still fit the place type that we updated in the master plan. They would limit them to three, three dwellings per lot, tract, or parcel. And permits are still required. I did have someone reach out concerned that this would just allow them to put up whatever they want, however they want, without any permits. We would still require permits, period. They don't get to sidestep that. The county also requires permits for those properties that this would affect, impact, like the one that Ms. Crabbe came up and spoke about. They don't have city water. They don't have G V S U D water down there. They have septic. And so the county issues those permits, I'm sorry, wastewater, or well. They have well water and they have.
Septic.
Septic.
Yes.
Ooh, it's late. The county still requires permits for that. The county still has regulations for that. So even if we approved ten homes on one acre and it's on septic, the county would still deny it. So there's still regulations that would still go into, go into effect to impact this, to make sure that it's not changing safety standards. So I do support this. I understand the concerns about it. I understand the concerns with changing the U D C. But I do know that there has been a, just in, in what's been brought to us, we've had an increase in the number of, of people who have asked for cups to allow a family member to move onto their property. That's something that I'm having to start to consider with my own parent. I don't live on ag, though, unfortunately, so it'll be a much longer process. But I do think that this is beneficial for the city. I think that it will help us move forward. It helps take some of the burden off of these ag properties that are plenty big to have another unit on their property. And it still maintains the safety and the agricultural feel of the area. That's my two cents.
Thank you, Katie. Anyone else have any questions, comments?
I've, I've got. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended denial. Can you go into that for me? Because I did not go to the planning and zoning meeting.
Sure. Planning and zoning commission on, on the use should manufacture homes in agricultural districts and acquire conditional use permit, cup zoning. Fellow, that regulation should remain in place. They still go through public hearing and meeting process before the N Z and city council to authorize manufactured homes in the ag district.
Next item is the plating, the subdivision exception. Current state law allows divisions that are five acres or greater to be exempt from local plating regulations. If, if the property has public access and utilities and no public improvements are required, the city of Sibolo has a similar ordinance within its U D C. The direction from city council in, in the proposed ordinance was to reduce that threshold from five acres to three acres. And, and that's what's before you. The Planning and Zoning Commission felt it should stay at five acres.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Can I get a motion?
I make a motion to approve eleven F.
I second that.
Got a motion by Councilwoman Cunningham, second by Councilwoman Roberts. Please vote. Motion carries four to three. On to G, approval, disapproval of an ordinance, amending ordinance fourteen ninety-three, Exhibit A and Exhibit B to the franchise agreement between the City of Sibolo, Texas and Waste Connections of Texas, LLC, D B A Vaquero, Regarding Base Rates, City Facilities, Sewers, I'm sorry, Service at No Charge, Terms of Collection, Transportation, and Disposal of Municipal Solid Waste and Recyclable Materials in the City of Sibolo, Texas. Mr. Reed, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. This item was presented to you previously on changing the fee schedule to reflect additional fees for commercial recycling and some additional front-load options for our commercial customers. In presenting this to you, I represented that this was based upon Waste Connections' interactions with our local businesses as they visited each and every one to the best of their ability to inform them of them as the new provider and what the rates were and to make sure that they were providing options that were appropriately sized for the businesses. And so Waste Connections sent to the city staff a request to add the fees that I just described, additional recycling carts and a couple of front-load garbage containers. Because why should a business pay for a six-yard recycling container if all they need is a two-yard or a three-yard or a four-yard? That's what the fee schedule does. Provides more custom-tailored options for our businesses. That's really good. Now, what's new tonight is that between the last meeting and tonight, one of our staff members reached out to Waste Connections and said, hey, our firefighters have asked if instead of having two garbage carts, if we could get, I believe it's a four-yard container. So they come in with their truck, right, and they pick that up and dump it into a bigger one. That saves our firefighters from having to cart those garbage ones out on a regular basis. And it also provides more capacity. Two garbage carts, ninety-five gallons each, versus the four-yard container. They were saying, how much more would that cost us? And knowing that we are bringing this forward to council, I just reached out to Jason Rowe and his partner. They're not here right now. Okay. And I said, guys, I'm sorry, I'm talking in plain language. We're amending the fee schedule. I would like to ask you not to tell us what the change would be from free for two carts to the cost of a four-yard front-load container. I'd like to ask you to provide that at no cost, and we would amend Exhibit B. And so that's what's new. They said, yes, we have no problem with that. So tonight, if you approve this ordinance, which amends your new franchise agreement, you're modifying Exhibit A, as I've already discussed, and you're also modifying Exhibit B to the benefit of our four fire stations, even though only three exist today. I'm happy to answer any questions for you.
I, I, I'm glad that you're bringing this forth because I've had multiple, over the last two weeks, I've had multiple people reach out to me and ask me why the businesses here along Main Street are allowed to just put their recycle stuff, just lay it out there. And it was a good question because I drove by and I saw it, and so I took some pictures of it. Because they didn't have nothing to put their recycle in. Where Republic did, they had containers for public, for recycle. So I'm glad that this is here. I hope that the businesses in downtown will utilize that.
Yes.
Because it does look bad whenever you drive out and you see basically a block of.
Cardboard.
Recycled cardboard laying there, so.
And Mr. Hicks, I appreciate that comment. I've, I've actually shared pictures too of downtown businesses before the transition. And that was part of why, particularly in Old Town, they wanted to visit every business and say, this is how we will pick up your recycling in the future. They talked about garbage. And, and this change to Exhibit B will allow those local businesses to have appropriately sized recycling options. And we will still have to retrain some businesses that they can't just leave cardboard in, outside of carts. And I think we might see that a little bit more. I'm forewarning you. But Waste Connection said, we will work closely with them to get them to where they need to be.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I've had multiple people reach out to me saying, hey, why am I having to get this, but they're not? And I'm like, it's a transition. They're working on it. So I'm glad that you're bringing me the solution tonight. And I just hope that the businesses will adhere to, to this. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Since you like this so much, why don't you make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve eleven G.
Second.
Got a motion on the table from Councilman Hicks, second by Councilwoman Sanchez Stevens. Please vote. Motion carries five to zero. Just give her an abstain, whatever. Absent. Thank you. Nope, not yet. We're gonna go to the resolution twelve. Approval, disapproval of a resolution authorizing the use of public resources in support of the fifth annual Sibolo Crossing Stampede and Charity Barbecue Cook-Off. Brian Huggins. Welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor, council. This is coming to you for the, basically the fifth year in a row. We are, they're asking that we support, city supports the Sibolo Crossing Stampede and Barbecue Cook-Off. Last year, I think it was the first year we actually brought a resolution to y'all, asking to be able to use. asking to be able to use public resources for that event, which is basically cones and barricades, uh, for the five K. So they're asking again this year, so we're bringing the resolution to you this evening to see if you'd approve of it again.
Of course. I'll make a motion to approve.
Hold on, real quick, a quick question. Wh, when is this? Is it, is it ne, is it next, not till next March or is it coming up this year?
No, sir, it's October eleventh this year.
Okay, ten, eleven, okay.
Yeah, they, they postponed it. Cause it normally is earlier in the year.
Okay, okay, cool. I'm glad to, glad to hear that it's actually happening this year.
Yeah, I'd, I'd heard that it wasn't gonna happen.
Yeah, same here.
So I'm glad, okay.
First, I've heard that it's back on. That's good.
I'm glad to hear it.
Go ahead and make the motion, Dingle.
I'll make a motion to approve twelve A.
Second.
Okay, got a motion on the table by Councilman Hicks, second by Councilman Randy Roberts.
Just to clarify, this is, um, Vaskin is partnering with Q for the Blue. This is not the Sibolo Barbecue Cook-Off.
Oh, okay. So it's the charity barbecue cook-off.
Yes.
Q for the Blue.
It's Q for the Blue. They always happen in the fall. Um, the Sibolo Barbecue Cook-Off had to take this year off.
Resolution is for the
Correct. It's for the use of the barricades for the event.
Yes, and the police officers for the run. Yep.
Either way, it'll still be fun. All right, vote. All right, motion carries six, zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Brian Huggins. Okay, now we are gonna roll back since Mr. Reed is here. We'll go back to, uh, did, did we do K? Did we get that done? Okay, okay.
We're on Jay.
All right, um, Jay, Presentation Discussion Regarding the City Manager's Proposed Twenty, FY twenty-six Budget. Mr. Reed.
Let me get this PowerPoint up and running. Mayor and Council, tonight, Anna Miranda, our Finance Director and I are presenting the City Manager's Proposed Budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. What is being presented tonight is a culmination of two full workshops, a budget workshop number three, in which we talked about tax rate. Multiple presentations at a, at regular council meetings as well. And with your direction, I bring to you a budget that represents the direction of the body of City Council. In my slides that I'll present before I hand it over to Ms. Miranda, I'm talking about this budget as a bridge, a metaphor that represents where we are. During the past four years, we have achieved as an organization many positive milestones, things that we should all be proud of. Today, Sibolo is far better off than where we were in twenty twenty-one. Through challenges and opportunities, we've found solutions to bridge those opportunities and challenges to come out better. And that's a reflection of shared leadership between the council, the executive team, myself, and let's say it for the record, every employee who shows up each and every day to serve our community. So I can envision that this budget is a bridge to the next four years. Four years that will be even better, a period of time, and I need to be honest about this, that will complete the foundation to lay the success for this community into the next decade. It's a bridge by recognizing this is the first budget in which council is not including the American Rescue Plan Act as a funding source for our market competitive pay around public safety. We are fully funding all of our pay after we used ARPA to get us in FY twenty-two to market competitive pay for public safety. And this is the first budget where we have fully paid for those salaries. It's a budget that also reflects that we have come a long way around capital improvement projects and street maintenance. Four years ago, I remember asking our Public Works Director, hey, where's the street maintenance money? Because the last two communities I served had high PCIs. And council had said during the interview process, we need to improve our streets. And the answer I received was a hundred and twenty thousand, maybe it was a hundred and twenty-five. And that was all we were putting towards roads. This budget reflects roughly eight hundred thousand dollars being put towards street maintenance, an amount that's slightly more than, last year, slightly more than the year before. And as this council has seen, just in the last eight months, our public work staff has stepped up their game because you've equipped them with fleet and equipment that's allowing them to do more in-house, stretching our dollar to improve our streets. We're also executing our capital improvement projects. We start design and construction within twelve months of issuing debt. When I arrived here, council may remember that the residents had approved general obligation bonds in twenty nineteen for Sibolo Valley Drive and nine other roads. I joined in twenty twenty-one and none of that money had been spent. This budget represents the first budget in which none of those projects are adding more funds to the budget. Because of your approval of FY twenty-five Street Rehab Package Number Two, you have authorized the completion of the last of the nine other roads. This is a bridge to you now starting to define the next set of infrastructure, including streets, that we will be working on for the next five years because this budget will include your five-year capital improvement plan. This budget represents an attempt to bring the rest of our staff to market competitive pay after council successfully, along with the support of our voters, bring public safety positions from police and fire to market competitive pay and our essential personnel in the FY twenty-five budget. This budget includes bringing the rest of staff who were found in positions that were out of market to bring them to market. This is a bridge to showing that council highly values top talent to attract and retain it while we hold staff accountable to do a great job for our community. This budget also represents, even when we have challenges with revenue because residential values went down this year, we have not cut service levels. We found ways as a staff to cut other essential, but not mandatory, costs in this budget so that we can maintain a fund balance of more than twenty-seven percent. It is a healthy general fund. So I'm happy to present to you the FY twenty-six proposed budget as the bridge to the next four years. That lays the foundation for a very prosperous twenty thirties and beyond. Here's the overview. You've seen the major steps and we're right here with this proposed budget. We'll hold public hearings in September, as will be discussed in more detail in this presentation, and your action following those public hearings on the budget, on the tax rate. The budget schedule key dates, we've shared this with you since the very beginning. Um, we have identified a new date for the public hearings to adopt the budget and the tax rate. That is September eighteenth. One thing that we have done each and every time at a budget workshop is we have shown you, you gave us direction to go this way and this is what we've done with that direction. So you, you were provided the opportunities at these two budget workshops, the June budget workshop, the July budget workshop, workshops number one and two. You gave support for the list of five-year bond-funded CIP. You, uh, expressed support, uh, for the fund balance reserve policy to be revised. And then in the regular meeting on July eighth, you took action to give, uh, give us direction to come back with a revised policy. The July fifteenth budget workshop, you expressed support for the EDC Board's recommended budget. That's in this budget. In the utility fund, you supported the two percent increase in wastewater rates and the postponement of any other rate until we complete the utility rate study that is currently underway. And as shown on the last bullet point, you supported a million-dollar set aside for future water acquisition and a hundred K for a consultant knowledgeable in water appraisal and acquisition to help us continue to be at the table to evaluate the options to acquire the right amount of water at the right time. This slide shows the direction you gave us in the Drainage Utility Fund and other special revenue funds. Your direction has been incorporated into this budget. This is about where I'm gonna step off, but I like this slide because when people talk about, well, why are you spending this money here and this money over here? Our corporation has multiple pots or buckets that we call funds. We have four operating funds and an operating fund is where we put people. So it's operating. That's your general fund, your utility fund, your development services fund, and your drainage fund. Other funds don't have people and so they're special revenue funds or the debt service fund is not a special revenue. It's dedicated to paying the debt that we've issued and that we're obligated to pay. And so the total budget that you're considering in September for approval, but you're looking at tonight, shows that we're a corporation, a business with a public purpose that is in all funds, a seventy-two million dollar corporation. And you can see that the operating funds are nearly fifty million. The debt service fund is eight million. Then all the additional funds, those special revenue funds in the EDC, represent the fourteen point seven million. I'm gonna hand this over to Ms. Miranda to take it from here.
Before that, Mr. Reed.
Yes, sir.
You're my mayor. I would really like to see that EDC fund rise. I mean, I know that we need to, the EDC.
And you said the EDC fund do what?
I'd like to see it increase because that'll help offset us having to reach out and add taxes to our, our citizens because we're having more funds come in. We really need to work on bringing the businesses here.
Absolutely. You know, in, uh, F, in calendar year fiscal year twenty-four, we opened in excess of fifty businesses. In this fiscal year that we're ending, FY twenty-five, we will have twenty new businesses open. You know, what we're focused on is just not prosperity by bringing local or chain restaurants and retail businesses here. We're also working very hard to bring primary employers to Sibolo. Now, council knows more than I can say publicly, but we have a couple of real opportunities to make announcements in the next several months of wins of recruiting primary job employers. And so I, I agree with you, Mr. Hicks. Um, even with a limited staff, we aggressively, proactively go out and make Sibolo a known commodity to retail and commercial businesses. We actively respond to regional ref, uh, not references, but regional opportunities from the Greater SATX, that's the Economic Development Corporation, that takes all regional referrals and pushes them out to all cities, including San Antonio, all suburbs. And we actively respond to them and we've been very successful in getting interest. But as you know, it's also very hard to land those deals and I'm very positive that we're gonna have some announcements in the coming months uh, to share with our community of bringing good paying jobs to our community. No, thank you, sir.
I'll start with the tax rate discussion. This slide's certified taxable value shows, um, our twenty-five values in the blue and our twenty-four, as compared to our twenty-four values in the gray. Uh, we did see a decline in our certified net taxable value of two point six percent from fiscal year twenty, from tax year twenty-four, which is fiscal year twenty-five. And, um, as you know, an inverse relationship exists between the property tax values and the, and the tax rate that would generate, uh, the tax rate that is needed to generate the same revenues on the same properties. I want to note also that the average taxable home value in Sibolo decreased by three point eight percent from three hundred and fifty thousand to three hundred and thirty-seven thousand this year. This is a ten-year history of net taxable values in Sibolo as of the data certifications of each year. The years following COVID had steeper growth, as you can see, from, uh, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three, in double digits. The housing market increases combined with growth in our commercial and, and industrial base during those years led to the double-digit growth. With higher inflation and interest rates, market values in residential properties have decreased, leading to the decrease in our overall values this year since residential properties make up a large segment of our total property value. This chart shows the change in assessed value by classification, net of exemptions. The percentage of residential has decreased from eighty-eight percent in twenty nineteen to seventy-six point three percent in twenty twenty-five. The percentages of other major categories have increased. Multifamily from zero point two percent to two point three percent over the last six years. Commercial from five point seven percent to eleven point two percent. And industrial from three point one percent to seven point three percent. So you see that we have a lot of healthy growth in these areas and, um, the, the decline this year has been in the, in the residential, uh, market values. The Guadalupe Tax Assessor Collector with values from the appraisal district and, uh, debt service information from the city that we provide prepares the tax rate calculations. The no new revenue rate is a rate that would produce the same amount of tax revenue if applied to the same properties in both years. And the voter approval tax rate is the minimum, the maximum rate allowed by law without voter approval. The proposed budget is based on the voter approval rate of fifty-two point two six cents and will require a public hearing prior to adoption. Uh, just to make note that one cent on the tax rate is equal to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of revenue in the general fund. The tax rate impact on the average home value. Uh, due to a decline in the average homestead property of, of three point eight percent, taxes at the no new revenue rate would result in a sixty-dollar, almost sixty-one-dollar decrease in taxes from the current year. The voter approval tax rate would result in a tax increase for the average homeowner of thirteen dollars and seventy-eight cents per year, which is less than a one percent net impact. The difference between the NNR rate and the VAR rate to a homeowner is less than seventy-five dollars a year. This slide shows the impact on general fund revenue. Uh, the tax rate impact of each of, each of these rates on general fund revenue, uh, showing at the bottom in bold, the twenty-five VAR, fifty-two point two six cents is which is what our budget is based on. And the difference from the general fund budget is two hundred and fifty dollars minimal. Um, as, as that rate changes or declines, going from fifty-two cents to fifty-one cents, the impact would be four hundred and seven thousand. Uh, going to fifty cents would be an impact of seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand. And our current rate would generate eight hundred and forty-two thousand dollars less than our current budget, our proposed budget, excuse me. Giving an update on our general fund. As Mrs. Cunningham mentioned earlier, she, she is aware that we have, uh, made some additional cuts from when we last presented to council on July thirty-first. Uh, at that time, expenses exceeded revenues by four hundred and sixty-two thousand. We've improved that number. So expenses exceed revenues by three hundred and thirty thousand. So some adjustments that we made are some increases to revenue based on the fee schedule that we presented earlier. Uh, we also reduced some non-mandatory, uh, costs in public safety. We also reduced some non-mandatory costs in public safety related to PPE and travel expenses. We reduced printing costs in IT. We reduced supplies and maintenance. And in doing so, we reduced enough to increase our custodial staff by a quarter FTE. So rather than one and a half, staff members will have 1.75 in terms of hours for custodial staff. We reduced the public works street supplies by 11,000 and reduced supplies and travel in administrative departments by 10,000. In our budget, we've also identified one-time cost of 393,000 to justify the use of fund balance for those items. I know a lot of this is very repetitive. We've gone through that in our budget workshops. But for the general public tonight who might be watching, we're just repeating a lot of this information you've already seen, so. This is the general fund revenues, revenue overview, and it is showing that the fiscal year '25 year-end estimate is within 1% of our original adopted budget. Some of the variances included elimination of the chipper service, which ended July 28th with the new solid waste contract, and a reduction in credit card fees when development services fund was separated from the general fund. Increased revenue in fiscal year '26 is a result of an increase in property taxes going up to the voter approval tax rate, an increase in sales tax of approximately 6% to 7% from this year's ending estimate, an increase in park, field, and facility rentals, and an increase in franchise fee from utility funds from 3% to 4%. And there is an offset by an elimination of the chipper service fee. On the expense side, increase, increases in our fiscal year '25 year-end estimate from our original adopted budget include an increase in capital for replacement of a fire truck. We just always like to remind chief about that one. From increased fund balance due to the insurance proceeds being received in the prior year. Other increases include increased utilities and contract services, which were offset by salary savings over what was budgeted, and lower financing payments due to the timing of new leased vehicles this year. Projected ending fund balance for fiscal year '25 is 6.2 million and is 31% of the fund's recurring operating expenses as of 9/30/25. For fiscal year '26, with a projected use of fund balance of 330,000 mentioned earlier, we project ending unassigned fund balance to be 5.9 million or 27.4% of recurring expenses. Increases in fiscal year '26 proposed budget of approximately 1.7 million are explained in the next couple of slides. The slide, this slide shows the increase by category, with an increase in salaries and benefits to cover impacts of a full year of last year's market study and this year's market study as well. An increase in services related to an increase in IT maintenance contracts and telecommunications. Increase in capital is related to technology replacements that were taken from other funds in prior years. Increase in intergovernmental costs and other contractual expenses is related to increases in our inter-local agreements for public safety services. An increase in financing payments is related to anticipating a full year cost of vehicles that were replaced in fiscal year '25. Overall, it was a 7.2% increase from fiscal year '25 to fiscal year '26.
Mayor, can I ask a question on that last one?
Go ahead, Joe.
So during our budget workshops, you were giving us numbers like 23.4%, and now all of a sudden we're at 27.4%. How is that in the reserves? How, how did we find this money? I mean, was that from the, y'all cutting y'all's budget even more? I mean.
We did reduce the budget from the first time that it was shown to city council. We also decreased the fiscal year '25 budget slightly, so it increased the fund balance reserve in fiscal year '25 from, I think, I believe it was previously shown at 30% to 31%.
31%, okay.
So that carries over into the following year and gives us a little more to start with.
Okay. Thank you.
This $1 allocation shows that for every $1, 56, 56 cents goes to public safety, fire and police. 23 cents to administration, which includes budgets for city council, city secretary's office, city manager's office, people and performance, finance, information services, communications, and non-departmental budgets. 16 cents of every dollar goes to public works as well. 5 cents of every dollar goes to animal services, code enforcement, municipal court, and economic development combined. Over 95% of the $1.7 million increase for fiscal year '26 is in the first four categories, public safety, public works, and administration. And this is a slide that you saw at budget workshop number one. We've made some adjustments. At that time, we had not included the market adjustments of the 2% COLA. But we have included that now, and in addition to the full year of market adjustments from the prior year, increases in public safety overtime related to some of those market adjustments. We're also anticipating healthcare increases of 10% to 12%. And as Mr. Reed mentioned earlier, elimination of reliance on ARPA funds. And as you know, as we've talked about, the inter-local agreements have increased for EMS services and the 911 dispatch services. Increases in utilities, telecommunications, and contract services. Technology replacements of 100,000. We added the MVCPA grant match when that grant was recently awarded. And we have offset, increases offset by reductions in the EDC incentive and an increase in salary savings. The debt service fund is supported by the INS tax rate. Principal and interest on tax-supported debt totals approximately 8 million for fiscal year '26, and this is the detail that's also shown in the tax rate notice that's published on our website. The debt service fund is very straightforward. Our revenues cover our expenses, $8 million of total revenue. The majority of that from property taxes, but we also have participation from YMCA, and then we've transfers from the EDC and transfers from street maintenance tax to fund the debt related to those areas. So $8 million of revenue to support $8 million in principal and interest, and it leaves a fund balance of 1.4 million, which is approximately 17.5% of recurring annual payments. Development Services Fund, newly created in fiscal year '25 to separate development activities from the general fund. Currently working on updating workflows in development services software to improve efficiency and effectiveness between departments. And as we know, this fund is subject to economic fluctuations in the housing market. So due to the downturn in construction activity earlier in the year, our revised estimate of revenue for fiscal year '25 is approximately 67% of the original budget, which was built on the average. The fiscal year '26 budget was, has been projected more conservatively at 85% of the average. The fiscal year '26 development services budget includes 25,000 for market adjustments and 3%, 2% COLA for staff. Compensation adjustments would be applied in January. Both fiscal year '25 and fiscal year '26 reflect revenues exceeding expenses of the fund. And fund balance at the end of fiscal year '26 is projected to be 340,000. This chart reflects history since 2013 of new home permits. And you can see that fiscal year '25 has been somewhat slower than other years, and we expect close to 250 new home permits to be processed this year. It's approximately 67% of the average over the last 12 years. Part of the reason for the, for the decline was the number of lots that were available for some primary home builders. And in May of '24, the primary builder was low on lots, and they were averaging more than half of the new home permits in '24. So lots became available for them when Unit 6 was approved by council. So we've seen an uptick in permits since then. And the last teal bar, the blue-green bar, you can see how, how that was low in the beginning of the year and has, and has increased over March, April, May, and June. Any questions on the Development Services Fund?
No. So DR has requested 20, 21 and Perry, but none of the others had requested any homes in this last.
I think it's just showing the top two.
The top two, okay.
That is correct.
The table.
Thank you, I appreciate that, because I was like, that's all that's.
I just have a question, and the Development Departmental Fund, right, that's what we're talking about? The nondepart, the non-departmental fund still exists within that fund, correct?
There is a, there is a non-departmental budget within the Development Services Fund as well.
Okay.
Because of, building costs or facility costs are shared between Development Services, and HR is also housed in, in City Hall Annex, and so we split those costs up.
So it was my understanding last year, we established this fund to transfer over the planning department, create its own revenues and so forth, so all the expenses come out. We also placed within this fund the additional taxation that was approved by the board last year to cover public safety, correct? That's, that's what was, okay. So whenever, yes.
There's a non-departmental department budget also in general fund, and that's where the public safety market dollars were.
Okay, so, and that is still held separate? How is that going to affect the new tax increase? Where, how, how are taxpayers going to be able to track their public safety tax increase to the 49, and then going to the 52, the additional? How, how is that gonna, is that gonna still be separated out, checked? Or is it going to just become all one?
It has become all one. In fiscal year '25, it was, it was segregated or separated into the non-departmental, non-departmental budget in case the voters did not approve the tax rate increase. So that, those dollars were set aside in one location, and when the voters did approve the tax rate, we allocated it to the, to the relevant departments. So we took the, just for the sake of round numbers, we took that $1 million and said, you know, 500,000 goes to police and 500,000 goes to fire department. And, and they increased their budgets by that amount. And so, the tax rate increase supported the market adjustments, compensation adjustments last year, and those continue. So there's a higher rate of pay currently. When we recruit new officers and new firefighters, they're receiving that higher rate of pay that the voters passed the tax rate for.
And have we added that additional officer that was also included in that?
The additional firefighter, yes, we have.
The firefighter, okay, yes, thank you.
And council, you'll remember, so that we were very transparent in how we moved the money from non-departmental into the public safety departments. We presented to you on December 10th, the presentation about how this money was being dispersed. So anybody can go back to the December 10th of 2024 council meeting to see those exact numbers. It's in the agenda link posted online. But also, the YouTube, right, or the video, also shows and disposes of the discussion that we had.
In the budget book that you have in front of you, I'm not sure what page number it is without looking, but in the fire department, you will notice the increase in FTEs. There's a facing page to the budget page that shows the personnel counts, what they were in FY '24, '25, and '26. As Mr. Reed mentioned earlier, the utility rate study is underway. We anticipate having a recommendation to city council for any utility rate changes in the fall. The rate study will consider future growth and future capital projects in setting those rates. The current budget does include a 2% rate adjustment on wastewater rates as a pass-through for the 2% rate adjustment that CCMA is proposing to the city. I want to note that the fiscal year '26 budget includes that 1 million set aside for future water acquisition to replace crystal clear water, and 100,000 for a consultant that specializes in water topics. It also includes a change in franchise fees. For water and wastewater services, franchise fee to the general fund will be 4% of revenues. Under the new solid waste franchise agreement, large commercial contracts will be managed and billed by Waste Connections, and the 10% franchise fee will be retained in the general fund. And for residential customers and small commercial accounts, city staff will continue to prepare the billing statements, and a portion of the franchise fee will be retained by the utility fund and a portion by the general fund. The fiscal year '26 budget also includes 24,000 for market adjustments and a 2% COLA.
I have a question, Ms. Miranda, regarding set aside 1 million for future water acquisition. Where is that 1 million coming from?
Utility rates.
Okay, so our, so the $9 acquisition fee that I see on my water bill every single month is going, is being collected to the amount of $1 million?
I, I wouldn't, the, the amount that's on your water bill is currently funding CVLGC. So Ciblo Valley Local Government Corp. was established years ago to research and develop water sources, and that's where the fee has been going. We, we do have adequate fund balance in the utility fund to support the $1 million expenditure for water.
Repeat that again one more time, that last part, I'm sorry.
We have enough fund balance in the utility fund to support the $1 million expenditure for water.
Ms. Miranda, if I could add, I believe part of that $1 million is in that money in the fund balance, if you will, and designate it for future water acquisition. So it's building up the bank for the day that we find the replacement.
Right, it's, it's kind of a holding spot in the budget for the cost that we anticipate next year. And our utility consultant will help us determine what that cost is and negotiate some options for us. Looking at, at the summary for the water, for the water fund revenues are projected to, to decrease by 1.6% from the prior year. It's a reflection of the change in our solid waste franchise agreement. Will no longer be showing the commercial portion of our solid waste, because they will be billed directly by Waste Connections. The original budget for commercial solid waste was 1.5 million in fiscal year '25. And so, that's just for reference, to show what that decline would, would be. In addition, in addition to the 100,000 for a water consultant that we mentioned, other increases in services include a $200,000 payment to CCMA for the first tranche of debt to be issued in fiscal year '26 in furtherance of the south plant expansion, and 49,000 for drought contingency and water conservation plan guidance. We're projecting 19.1 million in total revenue and 19.9 million in total expenses. The budget anticipates a 785,000 decrease in our fund balance, which accounts for the 1 million we've set aside for future water acquisition. Despite this, our ending fund balance is still a healthy 9.2 million. You've seen this table before. It does reflect the 2% change in our wastewater rates. Our average customer in the city uses 6,000 gallons in the winter, and that's what the winter average is based on. They will see a 71 cent increase in their wastewater rate. I know a question was asked the last time we talked about this. Together with a solid waste increase that takes effect this month, the average customer will experience an increase of $5.65 monthly, the combination of the two. CRWA provided us with a draft budget in early July. City Ciblo budgets 5.5 million for water contracts through CRWA. That's 27.5% of the entire utility budget. CRWA has passed on a 5% increase in raw water from Guadalupe Blan. CRWA has passed on a five percent increase in raw water from Guadalupe Blanco River Authority. And a three percent merit and three percent COLA for CRWA employees, as well as three new administrative positions. A three percent increase in chemicals and utilities, a ten to seventeen percent increase in property and liability insurance and a hundred and twenty-one percent increase in repair and replacement funds. And the repair and replacement fund is eleven million for major items, including the two million dollar Lake Dunlap Strainer Project and two million dollar. Or three point eight million dollar for Wells Ranch Emergency Generator Project. And those contracts were approved in fiscal year twenty-five. CRWA is anticipated to complete their budget process, setting all new fees and rates yesterday at their Board Trustees Meeting, so I actually. Haven't heard from them today, so I assume they adopted their budget. Yesterday evening.
Yes, we did adopt the budget at CRWA, however, there's only going to be two new administrative positions, not three, that are going to be part of the the. That will be coming to Sybalo. As far as admin cost.
So do you know if that budget was reduced?
I'm sorry?
Was their budget reduced, well, we, I I need to ask for a new.
Yes, it was.
Document from.
It was, it was reduced not by a whole lot, but, I mean, it was reduced by, I want to say it was a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you. I'll reach out to.
And I do have a copy of it if anybody would like to see it.
As I mentioned earlier, the. The new debt, the first tranche of debt that is coming from CCMA is anticipated to be issued in twenty twenty-six, and that first payment at the top. On the left is two hundred thousand, that payment has been included in our fiscal year twenty-six utility budget. You can see that those payments will continue to increase with the issuance of the second tranche of debt. This is the option that that gives us the most capacity. And under option two, the largest debt payment is anticipated to be from fiscal year twenty-eight to fiscal year forty-six. And the peak payment of two point five million, if that were divided between our existing customers, it would mean an extra eighteen forty-nine per customer per month. Alternatively, if the cost were based on on usage, an average customer at six thousand gallons, the the winter average. Would see an impact of sixteen forty-seven per month, which would be a forty-six percent increase in their bill over time. So the the goal, the the goal is to have customers taking this or using this capacity in that area to lessen the the cost.
And this begins in twenty twenty-six? When does the?
The first payment begins in twenty twenty-six with a two hundred thousand dollar payment at the top. And in twenty-seven, it's one point five million.
So we should be seeing that on our wastewater bill? At the, in twenty twenty-six?
No, it it will not be all at once. Twenty-seven is a lower payment. Than than the peak payments of two point five, but over the next three to five years, it's it's highly likely that our. Utility rate consultant is going to. Recommend some steep increases in our wastewater. For the Drainage Utility District, no fee changes are proposed, our fiscal year budget includes. Twelve thousand for two percent COLA. We've increased the franchise fee to the General Fund from three per, three percent to four percent, and the budget also can support. A drawdown of fund balance for capital equipment, specifically the Timco Sweeper that you see in that picture. Think we're excited about that. I don't, I don't see, see any excitement over that, we're excited about that. This Drainage Utility District summary. Reflects twenty-four actual and the twenty-five budget and how the twenty-five budget has changed and the twenty-six proposed budget. The original budget in twenty-five reflected a drawdown of fund balance by four hundred and six thousand for one-time cost, which included equipment for two hundred and seventeen thousand, the DCM update for forty-nine thousand. And a hundred and fifty thousand for our match on a grant application. To Texas Water Development Board for a drainage master plan, the grant was not awarded and a hundred and fifty thousand was not spent, and that's why you see the decline in the fiscal year twenty-five end of year estimate. Our end of year estimate also shows increased commercial drainage revenue, a combination of auditing efforts to get impervious coverage. Reflected accurately on all our commercial businesses and overall growth in our commercial base. Fiscal year twenty-six revenues reflect continued growth in our customer base. The change column reflects twelve point nine percent increase over the fiscal year twenty-five original budget, the change from the end of year estimate is is only four percent. Overall expenses are down two point seven percent from the original twenty-five budget due to reduction in services related to that grant match. Economic Development Corporation. It's a four B corporate corporation, which is not only authorized to fund projects related to industrial development in the furtherance of primary jobs, but also. Can fund quality of life improvement projects, including infrastructure improvement. Corporation is funded by a quarter cent sales tax, which was first authorized by the voters in two thousand and six. And the chart highlights the sales tax growth over the last twenty years. The first full year of sales tax totaled a hundred and eighteen thousand, and that's grown to more than, by more than twelve times. Highlights of the fiscal year twenty-six budget include continued growth in sales tax, budgeted at seven percent over the current year. New Edge Grant Opportunities, Edge standing for Economic Development for Growth and Enhancement. And it's similar to the big grant, but adds permits, fees and other special circumstances to eligible reimbursable costs, and the fiscal year. Twenty-six budget adds twenty-five thousand to those grant opportunities. Also incorporate a hundred thousand for strategic plan implementation, and there's master professional services agreements were put in. Were put in place in fiscal year twenty-five to begin this work. It also includes funding of a parks master plan for two hundred and fifty thousand. In each year that's presented here, revenues exceeded expenditures contributing to the growing fund balance. The fiscal year twenty-six budget projects revenues of one point five million and expenses of one point two million, which will add an additional three hundred thousand to fund balance. Bringing projected year in total to approximately three point one million. I try to highlight the different numbers in red. And I will. I don't, I'm not sure if y'all are aware, but our website also includes a page for the proposed budget. And all of the budget presentations from all of the budget workshops have been uploaded to that website. To that area of the website, and I will upload this one as well tomorrow. We have eighteen special revenue funds that we budget for, our projected beginning fund balance across these eighteen funds is twenty-three point six million. With approximately eighty-five percent being in impact fee funds. Including the park land fees, the Sybalo Public Facility Corporation is at two point four million, is ten percent of the total, and the remaining twelve funds make up the remaining five percent. We we don't typically go over these in in detail, we'll hit the funds that make up ninety-five percent. And also the street maintenance fund. Starting with the street maintenance fund, it's also funded by a quarter cent sales tax, it's has to be approved by the voters every four years. In. The coming year, we anticipate that sales tax revenues combined with a portion of fund balance. Carry forward will fund a debt service payment of approximately eight hundred and sixty-five thousand and street maintenance of seven hundred and fifty thousand. Sales tax growth of five percent will support an average of six hundred and fifty thousand annually in street maintenance over the next five years. Which will increase to over one point five million after debt is retired in fiscal year thirty. Tolly, Tolly Road Commitment, we've. We've committed to fund this from existing funds, we have prior debt issuance and. Impact fee funds available to fund eight and a half million for Tolly Road, including land acquisition. The Sybalo Public Facility Corporation. Mentioned earlier, has a balance of two point four million after funding the acquisition and renovation of the community center, and from the two and a half million balance and interest earnings. Our fiscal year twenty-five end of year estimate includes thirty-six hundred Parks and Recreation Commission events. And next year's budget includes two hundred and fifty thousand for phase two renovations, three thousand for Parks and Recreation Events, and fifty thousand for federal grants consultant. Ending fund balance is projected to be two point two million available for future one-time costs.
Ms. Miranda? I believe we decided not to do the fifty thousand dollar federal grant consultant, so that would need to be removed.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's. I'm looking for Brian.
Don't we have a grants writer already?
We have a grant writer.
We do have a grant writer.
My understanding was, it was, I thought it was supported by Council on July fifteenth.
Council requested us to send a list of proposed projects that this consultant may support us on, I sent that to Council. And I don't know what the decision decision after that was, whether you wanted to continue to support that fifty thousand dollar grant position or not.
Okay.
A future agenda, I mean, can we not?
We can, we can take Council's guidance tonight, feedback and guidance to.
I would agree, I had this in my notes too, to remove that, we're not in a position to have that right there.
May I save us fifty thousand this year?
In the Public Facility Corporation, yes.
As a matter of fact, I was actually thinking that fifty thousand would be better used for the residents, the NTMP program that's not funded. Giving a little bit, something, something back to the residents, because I'm looking at the budget, there's really not much given back to the residents, it's just a lot of utility increases, payment increases, tax increases. And the residents can't really read this budget to say, what are we getting as far as anything for us?
This is a different fund than what's used for the NTMP, this is the Public Facility Corporation Fund, just like we have an EDC fund. That's a separate money, and so that's why the federal grants consultant was funded under here. So yes, while I typically would agree, let's move the fifty thousand to streets because we desperately need it, that it doesn't overlap here, this is a separate fund.
This is what we received from. The cell of the apartments.
And so Mayor and Council, if. We would want clear direction on removing this from the. Proposed Public Facility Corporation Fund Budget, and if you want to allocate fifty K or some other amount. To another purpose, Ms. Sancha Stevens mentioned the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program, NTMP, did I say that right? And you can do that, and so this fund is not restricted in its use, so. This is for Council to give us direction on, okay? And so I'm glad we're having that conversation, and that's why Anna Miranda highlighted that in a different color.
Glad that she highlighted it too, because I saw that and we both said, hey, I don't remember, I remember your email, Mr. Huggins, so. But yeah, I, to me, we can remove that, that'll save us fifty thousand, I'll put it back in the the public facility.
Would you, would you ask? Do we put some funding toward the NTMP since we are removing this?
Absolutely, yes.
How much would y'all recommend?
Fifty, if it's already in there and in your budget, that way, that way. You're not having to reconstruct this whole book.
Okay. The, the NTMP, we would go through the application process, and it's up to fifty thousand, so there may be a project, and we only need to spend twenty-one thousand, so.
But but just change the the wording on that from federal grants consultant to the neighborhood, because I I don't want you going and killing a couple more trees, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to take this away from you, but.
No, that's fine, thank you for, no adding, I was going to ask Mr. Gomez, Mr. Gomez, with fifty thousand, based on the applications that you've been getting, would that be? And I know the applications didn't exactly follow the the guidelines, and that, do you feel like fifty thousand is? Yeah.
Fifty thousand will get us a couple of the projects that we're trying to get.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all.
Perfect. Right, and it's, and it's the last, it's the last slide where we're seeking your feedback and direction, so, perfect timing. Okay, so we'll, we'll make that change, you're, you're right, I won't, I won't be killing any more trees for that. We'll put a digital copy of the proposed budget book on our website, and then we can send, send it out to Council also digitally, letting you know where the changes may be.
I would, is this the time that I can potentially ask about? The chambers and our involvement, and part of my reason for. The Tri-County is, I believe, we pay for a golf tournament that nobody participated in last year or this year. And. I just see that, I see that more of us go to the chamber events. In shirts, which Maggie's always here. You know, I always see them at the ribbon cuttings for our Sybalo businesses, and they, I mean, the chamber is there supporting our businesses. I unfortunately am not involved in the Tri-County, so I don't know exactly what, you know, their, their. Okay, but but my reasoning too of doing, of asking if this is something that we could kind of.
For the last two years of their participation within our Sybalo businesses, and to Danita's point, I've seen the chamber. With the Planning Department with the permitting and all of that, and they're very active, coming to Council to help with variances and so forth, and I've only seen the Tri-County to one. And that was to a storage ribbon cutting, and which the, the chamber actually facilitated the ribbon cutting, so I kind of was just wondering, what, what is the value that we're getting with this membership? Since we're talking about cuts, I was also in agreement with possibly maybe allocating those resources back to the the city itself when funds are short. For instance, something that is of value, someone that is of value actually would be Stephanie from our senior program. It, I guess recently learned that Celrico dropped Stephanie's hourly rate to fifteen dollars an hour. And we know how highly esteem, how highly our seniors esteem Stephanie, I've seen her in action, her, her personality, her connections with the seniors, they love her. We cannot find anyone else like Stephanie, she is practically irreplaceable, so how can we, how can we help bridge that gap, right? I understand that they dropped it to fifteen, possibly the city was going to go about three, so we can get back to the eighteen dollar mark, but I'm, I'm proposing that maybe we can go ahead and maybe meet her at the point where. We pay our park maintenance worker one, twenty-two dollars an hour. And where those funds that we're paying for the Tri-County, we can easily shift that over to help offset her, her, her salary. That way it doesn't come to an additional cost for us, but I just see the value that she brings, I feel like this is great retention just as well. I, she never asks for anything really, she's quite content, and she loves our seniors, and I think this is just a great way to pay it forward.
Just for a second, just for a second, I'm asking, you said they brought.
Oh, I'm sorry. Celrico, that is the.
Go over the contract.
Yeah, that is the, the, I'm sorry, that is the, the ACOG, the contract that is paying Stephanie, and let's see, so.
So they reduced the compensation.
They reduced the compensation.
Just in this calendar year.
Thank you. Yes.
And Mayor and Council, Ms. Sancha Stevens is making great points, I do want to say that this budget, it has loaded into it. The city covering the difference between the fifteen dollars, which was what this Celrico is going to pay her. And her previous pay, which was seventeen dollars and sixty-eight cents an hour, this budget includes. Funding to bring her back to eighteen dollars an hour, so I just want Council to know, we wanted to make her whole too. But if Council wants to further that pay, then that's why you are giving us direction on the budget.
What, what about twenty dollars, I mean, is that going to be a, would you be able to figure that out, what, twenty dollars an hour?
Can I just say, I'm not sure if I can really talk on this because Stephanie is under the Parks Department.
Oh, is she?
Correct? Stephanie falls under the parks?
Well, let me clarify, she's not a city employee. The budget to pay for the senior program could be located in any department budget. And so.
So.
If you want to recuse yourself, you. and so, if you want to recuse yourself, you may, but I don't see...
Well, I just want to explain kind of where we're, where Ms. Sanchez-Stevens and myself are going with this. Because I didn't think I could speak on it, I did ask Ms. Sanchez-Stevens to kind of bring it up. Yes, Celero Code did put her to 15, the city does pay $3 an hour for a total of 32 hours a week, of, so it comes to $384 annual, 4,600 annually. I am proposing, as well as Ms. Sanchez-Stevens, that we bring her to $22 an hour, which would be 10,752. It's a difference only of $6,144 being added to our budget to increase the program director for the senior center, who is so valuable, and we have been said that we need to pay our people what they're worth. Well, Stephanie is worth so much more than this, this, but we need to try to show our appreciation in some way for what she does for our seniors, because our seniors are important to our communities. I mean, the, so we got, we gotta take care of all of our residents as best as we can, so.
I agree, and, yes, and also along with that, I did want to revisit the, Ms. Peggy, I don't know if you know this off the top of your head, but the 8,000 item in the city council budget for coins and merch and so forth, I don't know what that expense looks like this past year, but if, if we could also possibly reduce that just as well, because I don't think we're spending that amount. I think we talked about cuts before, even with the council budget, and I think that is something that we would consider so we could allocate those funds better suited in else, in other areas in the council budget just as well.
Just to circle back to my favorite thing to bring up, that still hasn't happened, our council budget, the training policy that I brought like a year and a half, two years ago, that helps kind of clarify how much we're gonna spend on training, what kind of training council should go to. We have a lot of opportunities for travel, that doesn't mean that we have to take them. If we're talking about cutting things that are important, and that can be useful for bringing in economic development, maybe going to a training can be cut too. Some of those trainings where we have to travel are four or five grand each. We're talking about cutting a chamber membership that supports businesses. And they did just, Tri-County just did get a new executive director, executive director?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, I know that they're trying to turn it around. I've had the same concerns in the past with lack of visibility in our area, but I have seen an improvement in the last few months. But, that being said, there's a lot of stuff in our council budget, like our swag, our challenge coins, branded t-shirts and, and logos and such, the training budget, there's a lot of stuff that we, we could easily cut five grand from our own budget as opposed to that. So, I absolutely, wholeheartedly agree we should pay Stephanie, 100%. I don't know that cutting a chamber membership flat out is the right thing. If we didn't do the golfing thing, we shouldn't be paying for it, and I think that's a separate fee.
Comes with it, no, it's not.
It just is included.
It's included.
Yeah, and I believe we're paying both chambers the exact amount.
No, that was the one that you went to in the summer time.
No, that was the chamber.
No, 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 that, that was the Tri-County Chamber.
No, she wasn't there at the Tri-County Chamber.
Yes, she was.
Who was it?
Yes, she was.
JW?
You were there.
Oh, I was there at that Tri-County one, because that was...
Yeah, that was the Tri-County Chamber.
That's true.
Y'all were both there.
Then it was the chamber one that we didn't participate in, right?
Okay.
I, I don't know, one of them, one of them didn't participate in. Thank you, thank you for reminding me of that.
I just, I just want to make clear real quick that we're not just flat out cutting out, this is budget season, this is a time to discuss cuts, right? And as far as like, you know, logos on a shirt, I purchased my own shirts to only pay the embroidery, for the city to pay the embroidery fee for the logo that I do not possess or I do not have. And I know that there's other council members here who purchase their own shirts just as well, so we're not even dipping into that per person, you know, ward clothing fee and so forth. I, I don't recall, pertaining to training, I don't recall a specific training that ever costed 4,000. I do recall a convention that possibly cost 4,000 that didn't pertain to council members themselves. I think that was more of a, our mayor going to an EDC thing, and we, the policy subcommittee just recently also tidied up that travel policy that's gonna come to Paul, and then it's gonna go ahead and come before council. That has all those details, Katie, that you had just mentioned. However, I feel that, being that we're in an election year just as well, cutting your training budget and, and eliminating that opportunity for new council members to come, and just take training classes to help them make land use decisions, understand parliamentary procedures, understand legislative updates, just, there's just so many things that go into it, that from a resident standpoint, we're all residents, we go into a city, we have our own biases, and these trainings really help that education piece. You're not gonna have good legislators who are educated, because they don't have any institutional knowledge, which you are blessed with, by the way, because you work for a city, so you come with that. So we are not giving, let's say, new council, I'm not talking about myself, but new council an opportunity to have access to training. So I feel that cutting that out would be a complete disservice to our residents when it comes to decision-making here on this board.
Right, and I just want to be clear, I'm not talking about cutting the entire training budget, I'm talking about decreasing it maybe a little bit. If we're talking about cutting other things, that would be one area to cut. My husband's an attorney. Every year, when you're an attorney, you have to pay your bar dues, and you have to do a certain number of CEUs, or ongoing continuing education. For years, he took the Texas Bar CLEs, they are very expensive. They're like $900 an hour, some ridiculous amount, if you can find a package deal, then you can do that. We, he paid that for at least 15 years, that amount, every single year for those CLEs. You can get the same CLEs with a different teacher, from a different provider, for $99, and that package comes with like 20 hours or 15 hours, however many hours it is. So you need an ethics CLE, you go to a different provider. TML is fantastic, but TML can be expensive. There are other trainings, and I know Danetta takes a ton of them online. There are tons and tons of trainings that are free through ACOG, that are low cost, that are online and recorded. TML is fantastic, and this is not a slam against TML, I've been to a TML training. There are ways to decrease our training budget while still maintaining the amount and the quality of training. We also have new attorney, new attorneys, we could ask them to provide some training. I know we've asked that in the past, to have planning and zoning training for the commissioners. We've asked for a council training. We had ethics training a year, two years ago? At Noble Group?
We had it last year.
Okay. Okay. Ever since COVID, my years are mixed up. But those are, those are trainings that our own team can provide. We can get a consultant to come in if we need to, that would be pricier, that's probably not the best plan. But we could partner with, with Shirts, with Selma, with Live Oak, with all of these other cities, and I think Shirts did that one time with TML.
Yes, we still, we still continue to do that with Live Oak and Shirts.
So I think that there's other options, and, and I just wanted to clarify, I'm not talking about cutting the budget together altogether, I think training is important, and I think that if people want to take training, they absolutely should. But if we're talking about budget and we're talking about cutting costs, that is one, one way. You don't always have to go to the same training, if you can get this 400 training, $400 training here, and it's $40 here, then maybe we look for other options. Just like we get bids for procurement, we should kind of look around at other options for training too.
Right, and honestly, the only expensive thing that I have seen with TML, because your trainings are actually low cost, they can be free, they can be $45, and they can be up to like $95. The most expensive thing is actually just the conferences, that's really the main thing. And when it comes to their actual trainings, it's, especially when you get those online, you can share those within the rest of the organization. So instead of us paying for the same thing twice, it's like, you know, that we should probably give direction to the city secretary to say, if a council member purchases an online training, please send it to the rest of the council members, that way we all, it's just registered once, and we all get that passcode. And then we can also, if it pertains to land use, we can send that over to P&amp;Z, so they can take benefit of that. So I do like that TML has actually reduced their, their continuing education hours in order to hold your CMO, so that's not an additional pressure, an additional cost to the city, so I do appreciate that. And, so, I, I just wanted to, I think that's a good way, if we have a shared training, that that could help reduce costs just as well. And I think carpooling's always great, right? For a per diem, to reduce in per diem, whatever we can do to help lower those costs as well. Honestly, I think 15,000, is it 15,000 in our budget for training, or 12,000?
15.
15? 12?
It's, it's 15.
15.
15,000 is, among eight people, is pretty frugal, that's like less than $900 a person if everyone, you know. Where I've seen other cities also that are pertaining to our size, what their budgets have grown with, within training, I'm okay with it remaining 15,000 considering that, you know, a stable amount instead of an increase, but I do feel like we could probably shift some of that merch, because I don't think that we spend $8,000. We're, we're not out there, but it's great to have coins whenever we have ribbon cuttings, though. It is embarrassing going to a ribbon cutting in your own city and you have nothing to give, and so it is great, and they receive that as a token of appreciation, because then they feel like they belong to the city. So a simple little coin goes a long way, I'm just, the little pin to, to put it on, that's what I like.
I totally get it. The coins are expensive, though, and Peggy was telling us how much they cost to get made.
Well, once you...
And, and those are very military oriented, if you're a non-military business owner, they may not understand the whole thing behind that, so. Another, another thing I wanted to point out is our training budget last year was 15,000, and our FY '25 end-of-year estimate is 20,000. So we went over the training budget by 5,000. So if we're setting it for 15,000, in FY '25, it went over by 5,000. In FY '26, we're proposing 15,000, we go over again by 5,000, then that's a problem.
I think it was because of the convention cost in there, so I, again, we looked at the travel policy so that we can go ahead and restrict it solely for conference travel and training explicitly, and I, I would have to say that's what it was for.
Well, I mean, I didn't go to any trainings this last year that were paid for, I don't think Randy did, so there's, I don't think Jeff did, so there's three of us that didn't do any trainings this year, so that 20 grand was divided amongst five people, that's 4,000 each, so...
I, I will say, I did...
And I don't think you spent four grand on yourself, because you weren't here long enough.
I mean, I, I will, I will say that I probably was in the rough, you know, 1,500 range just from the conference that I went to in March, and then a few other things that I've done online that I requested.
But some of the other things are, we have 8,500 for marketing, advertising, marketing, and promo.
Is that where the coins come from, that line?
I think so. In '25, our budget was 8,500, we only spent 5,000, so that may be one that we could cut because we didn't spend the full amount last year. For uniform and clothing, that did go down by 2,800, but our fiscal year '25 adopted budget was 2,800, and it spent 2,800. I've been on here for four years, I don't have anything with a logo on it, not saying that that's good or bad, but...
I didn't purchase a single thing this year.
We spent $2,800 on shirts.
But, but when I first got on, Katie, I was spending my own money on my own stuff.
And I, I, on my own shirts and then...
Yeah, and I'm not, I really don't want to come across as judgy, I'm really not, I'm just saying like, we can, we can, we have little name tags, we have little name tags, so if, we don't necessarily need something with a logo on it to go to a meeting with the public, like, we have our name tags. So if we're talking about things that are just not necessary, do we need t-shirts, or shirts, or pants, or jackets, or whatever, with a logo on it to survive, to run the business of the city? No. So that's, that's how I'm looking at it, it's really truly not judging anyone for that.
Okay, listen, it's already 10:15, we still have an executive session to get to, but let's, let's try to move on.
Is there a figure in mind that you want to reduce the council budget by, and then Peggy can decide which line items?
Yeah, we'll, we'll take a look at that in the future.
Yeah, and so, Mayor and Council, we're coming back on August 26th, and so, if you want to continue to work out the details on this tonight, that's your prerogative. If you want to discuss this on August 26th and make this revision, then we would incorporate it into the final version that you would have on September 18th.
Put it down as an agenda item.
We will do that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do our homework and we'll bring potential cuts.
It'll be the same caption as tonight, just so council knows it's, so that...
But let's put an action item on there, because this one is not action, this is discussion.
Yes, sir.
So, let's, let's move on, we still have other items to get to, so thank you, Ms. Miranda, I appreciate it.
And to understand, you're looking at the council budget and how maybe to move funds around or reduce certain expenses, right? That's my understanding.
That, and I think make sure that we're paying Stephanie where she...
Yeah, the, the 20 bucks, for sure.
And with the council budget, I think it's, for me, it's disingenuous to ask every other department in the city to cut, and we're not looking at ours to cut too, so...
Okay.
Ours is very skinny.
Ours is a slam, it's not, it's not a lot, but I think we still should put some effort forward.
Okay, next item is K, discussion action on approving the order of the special election to be held on November 4th, 2025, for the purpose of voting on charter amendments, props A through V. Peggy Simics.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Okay, Val?
So, excuse me, not on the podium, but I need to be here so I can do your motion, but it's just the order calling the election, the special election for the charter amendments, this'll be what goes on the Guadalupe County website, what we send to them to order the election.
Okay.
I just need you to make a motion.
Motion to move, approve.
Joel So moves, we have a second, second by Councilman Mahoney, all right, please vote. Okay, motion carries 6-2-0. Next up is item L, discussion action on approving the order of the general election scheduled for November 4th, 2025, for the purpose of voting for mayor. Council place two, council place three, and council place seven. Valerie Chapman.
Again, same thing, just for the general election, for the, the spots that are open.
Make a motion to approve, Tim L.
Second.
Okay.
Thank you.
We got a motion by Hicks, second by Sanchez-Stevens, please vote. Motion carries 6-0. Okay, now we're gonna jump over to the executive session, the city council will meet in executive session as authorized by the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney to discuss the following, A, Tully Road update, B, project vintage store, C, annexation negotiations, D, city manager, city secretary appointment, employment, evaluation and duties, and E, discuss to evaluate city attorney services. The time is 10:19 PM.
Can we add M to this as well?
Uh, yeah, is that the other one that was next on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, and we'll add M, which is, what was it?
Discussion on email received on returning items, city employee.
Employee items, okay, yeah, we'll add discussion on email received to return the items to a city employee that was terminated. No problem. The time is 10:19, we'll break and executive.
Yes, I am, thank you.
Yes, I am. Thank you.
You need to say something? Okay. All right. Sure. Okay. The time is 12:26 PM. We're resuming from executive session. Joel, did you want to make that motion?
Yes, sir. For 13D, I make a motion for the mayor to sign the letter pertaining to Ms. Simick's retirement. The council requested the city attorney to write covering the items discussed in the executive session from July 22nd. The city council also accepts Ms. Simick's retirement date of February 27th, 2026 as her last day of work for the city of Siblo.
Okay. I got a motion by Councilman Hicks, second by Councilman Roberts. Please vote. Motion carries six zero. Yeah. Okay. We're going to go back to item L or M?
M.
No, M we're good. Yeah.
This is discussion. We discussed it.
Now to end, discussion from council members that have attended seminars, events, or meetings. Start with Joel.
Well, I'm going to make this short and sweet because we're already late, but I know that the tax rate that the county's going with, they've gone up almost, had it written down here, from 31 to 33. And I know that the, yeah, they're going up that. And a couple of other things, but nothing really. AAMPO, I was there all day last Friday from the freight study. And then we had demography to find out where the migration of people are coming, where we're going to have to build roads in the area. We had that discussion in regular MPO, and we were discussing the different projects. And just so everybody knows, that the top getter on the, like, we got 1103 was the top getter a few years ago. 3009 project where it goes up and over the railroad tracks was the top public getter when they presented to us on Friday. So that's all I've got, um, mayor, for right now.
Thank you, Joel. Donetta?
I was at Randolph Metrocom Rotary Club presenting them their strategic partnership award, and then attended breakfast for American Diabetes Association. Of course CRWA, which again, if anybody wants to see their budget, is just as bad as Siblo's. I'll be happy to provide it to anybody.
You bet.
I mean big, okay?
Okay.
And just the different construction, parks and recs, about the fun run, and how council can help be there to register people running, stuff like that. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Norma?
I was able to attend the, there was a coffee with the cops at the Siblo YMCA last Friday morning, so I was able to attend that. And they also had a back-to-school bash in the evening here at that multi-event center. Was able to be there and support them just as well with helping set up and taking a side dish, so that was great. Also, this past Monday, yesterday, was able to attend CASA's 40th anniversary, and ribbon cutting there with the chamber. And I think that's about it.
Thank you. Katie, anything?
Sue's tree dedication, thank you to Mr. Huggins. Oh, you are still here. Thank you for setting that up, and the Alumni Association of the Siblo Citizens Police Academy for doing that. It was a really nice event. And then Mabel, one of my daughters, and I filmed a commercial for waste connections. We got drafted after I made fun of you. And on hazardous waste. So I'll be patiently awaiting my Oscar. There's a, there's a community car seat check event coming up with shirts, usually partners with Selma, Siblo, Saguin, and any of the other public safety offices that have child passenger safety technicians or car seat techs, to do an event at the end of September every year. That's called Seat Check Saturday. But Officer Kraft with shirts is organizing that. It's Saturday, September 20th. It'll be at the shirts' community playscape. That's free for anyone who wants to show up to get your car seat checked. If you have a child who's even out of a car seat, they're not in a booster anymore, or they're in a booster, you want to see if they're old enough to be out of it. It's a free opportunity to make sure that your kid's in your car correctly.
Cool. Anything from you?
Uh, nothing.
Next one, if you have something for the agenda, just send it to Peggy, please. Okay. On Pete, anything else, Peggy?
No.
No? Okay. All right. Motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned.
All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? All right. We are adjourned. Thank you.